This meeting of the Alamo County Planning Commission to order for June 14th, 2022. And we have, uh, we have, uh, one of our staff is remote. We'll be able to do the roll call.
Yes, are you ready? Mr. Missile is not there.
Ellen, are you able to do the roll call remotely?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
He's frozen. All right, we'll just go down the, we'll just go down the line and just say your name and say here for the record.
Can you hear me now?
She.
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay. All right, I'm ready. Ms. Firehawk?
Here.
Mr. Karazana?
Here.
Mr. Bivens?
Here.
Mr. Claiborne?
Here.
And Mr. Murray?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'd also like to go out of order a little bit and welcome Lonnie Murray as our newest Planning Commissioner. So would you like to say a few words of hello?
Sure, it's a welcome to serve. Um, I've served on the Alamo County National Heritage Committee and on the Thompson Jefferson Snowwater Conservation District for many years. And it's gonna be exciting opportunity to participate.
All right, thank you very much. And thank you for agreeing to serve.
Welcome.
All right. So with that, uh, we will now move on to other matters not listed on the agenda for the public. These are matters that are not currently scheduled for a public hearing. So if there's anything that is not on the agenda for this evening that a member of the public would wish to speak to now would be the time. Seeing no one rushing the podium?
And I don't have anybody on this gym side either.
Oh yes, thanks for reminding me about remote. Okay. We'll move on now to the consent agenda. Does any commissioner wish to pull the item from the consent agenda?
Madam Chair.
The minutes and the Galaxy Farm side.
Madam Chair, I, well, I would not like to pull anything. I, I would like to offer a sincere appreciation to the developer of Galaxy, but to the Galaxy project on the naming of the streets of that particular development. I want to thank her for being so, so bold as to name them after STEM Women. And so I, I assume people will know what STEM is, but if not, Google it please. Um, and so I want to congratulate her and tell her how much I appreciate it.
So noted. Any other comments or anything you wish to pull from the agenda? Consent agenda? If not, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, we can call the roll.
Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Bivens?
Aye.
Mr. Karazana?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we've adopted the consent agenda. We'll now move on to the public hearings for this evening. We have two public hearings, even though there is one site that we're considering, but there's two specific items that have to be addressed separately. So the first, uh, public hearing item is ZMA 2021 00008 Old Ivy Residences. And we have the staff report.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me okay? My name's Rebecca Bagstail and I'm a Planning Manager, um, with Community Development for Development Review. And I'll be joined by Kevin McDermott, who is the Planning Manager for Transportation. We have a, a number of requests to cover. As you said, there's two separate rezoning requests. And then along with the primary rezoning request is a step back waiver and a parking reduction request. So we're gonna step through each of those and pause as we need to for questions and then, um, action at the end. Kevin will be doing the transportation segment of, of the presentation. As I mentioned, um, the primary rezoning is the residential rezoning and then the associated rezoning is the amendment to the steep slopes overlay zoning district. We're gonna start with orienting everyone to the location of this site. It's at the corner of, uh, the corner of the, I'm gonna get my pointer here. The 250 bypass along Old Ivy Road. The site is there and goes, um, and is about 35.5 acres. It's near that intersection with Old Ivy and the on and off ramp. You've heard a great deal in, in terms of its location being significant from some of the letters of support and mentioned in the application. It is, um, within close proximity to a number of employment centers such as UVA, commercial, um, destination. So it would be convenient for, um, residents of that area. Zooming in a little closer to the site, you can see the, uh, surrounding properties that are closest in proximity to it being University Village, Huntington Village, Ivy Gardens, down Old Ivy, heading east into, um, the UVA area. And then across the road are some properties that have been developed, um, with UVA offices and our commercial. And then to the north, of course, is, um, the Darden, Darden Business School at UVA, North Grounds, including the Law School and other, um, UVA nearby destinations. Um, segueing to the zoning request, um, and the specifics of that, because this one does have a great deal of specifics to it, um, with the five different parcels, with three different zoning categories of R10, R15, and R1 that comprise the, um, approximate 35 acres. And those do include, um, the R10 and the R15 properties have proffers associated with them. And one of those proffers is that, um, the R15 properties are limited to R1 density until transportation proffers are deemed satisfied by the Board of Supervisors. Kevin's gonna go into that a little deeper later in the presentation. Overview of the request, um, just a few highlights of the proposal. It is a request for 525 residential units would be a mix of at least two housing types, maybe more because, um, it will allow apartments, single family detached, single family attached, duplexes, and will allow the range of housing types. Um, they are providing, um, open space and preserving environmental features and allowing for adequate amenity areas for active recreation and accommodating the Ravanna Trail, providing a transit stop, crosswalk across Old Ivy to, um, existing pedestrian connections. And then a proffer for offsite, um, pedestrian connections along with affordable housing. So those are sort of the general details that we'll get into in a little bit more specific as we looked at some later slides. We've reviewed this request against the comprehensive plan. And I'll get my pointer again over here. The green, the parcels are outlined in yellow and they include parcels designated Parks and Green Systems of about 20.6 acres. And then the orange is urban density residential, which is designated for up to 34 units per acre. And it's consistent with, uh, the housing types and the density in terms of, um, the number of units, uh, with one exception, there are some green space areas that, um, we believe should be re-designated, um, portions of parcels that we think is a little bit of acreage that would be appropriate to use in the density calculation. The, the comprehensive plan would suggest up to 500 units and the proposal is 525, as we said. There's a lot of history associated with these parcels and the land use designation, some of which ties back to it being a corridor for the, um, Western Bypass, which is no longer a project. And we have with rezonings, as you know, with some of them, you've seen in recent years, we get into like, in a, into a finer level of, of analysis in terms of the, the environmental areas and, um, and what, what areas should be used for development. Keeping in mind that we want to preserve those areas, but also this is in the development area where we want to make sure we're utilizing the land efficiently as far as one of our other comprehensive plan goals. This is a overview of the concept plan, which I'm sure that the applicant will go into a lot of detail about some of these features of the plan. And I do need to reorient you because we've, we've pivoted a little. North is now this way. There's the north arrow. Old Ivy Road is to the left and then the bypass is to north, to the nor, well, to the west rather. And then to the south is Huntington Village and University Village. So the tan building envelopes would be the apartment building envelopes and the blue going back along this vehicular travelway up and around sort of the L shape there, reverse L, or in the blue, the light violet blue areas. And then you can see how the internal travelway and the parking areas are laid out in the hatched area. And, um, in the comp plan designated green space areas are those environmental features, the wooded areas, stream buffer and some managed slopes that are, um, being preserved as open space or green space on the site. This is an R15 development. So unlike the planned development districts that require the plan as part of the ordinance, the mechanism with an R15 district is proffered. So major elements of this plan are proffered. And I'll point out a couple more things. Um, the blue lines are the, um, multi-use paths. And that's along the Old Ivy frontage. And then the purple line is emergency access for fire that sort of meanders through the site. Very important, um, in terms of the Rivanna, Ravanna Trail is allowing for its current location to remain in some places and then allowing for its relocation, meandering a little around and through the site over to the connection here in purple on the left. So the purple is the existing trail. The green dash line is the relocated trail. And the Ravanna Trails Foundation has indicated that they are, um, they don't object to that relocation and Parks and Rec has also reviewed the request. So those are sort of the general specifics. There are opportunities for interconnection and future, um, pedestrian access points, um, if the applicant is able to work with the adjacent owners. Some of the transportation and multi-use, um, aspects, Kevin's gonna go into a little more detail in a minute. With regard to this project, there is, um, one of the issues to be raised was consistency with the affordable housing policy. The county's policy is that, um, it's recommended that new residential units, the total of the new residential, or the total residential units within a, a new development would provide 15% affordable units. Um, the application proposes 525 and they proposed, um, 14, with the way the math might work is 14 affordable units. Um, and the applicant has based their calculation on the difference between, um, what they believe the buy right yield would be if those properties, um, were able to develop at an R15 density, um, up to 430 units. But staff has, uh, provided in the report that the difference is significant in terms of doing that calculation, which not, is not consistent with the policy. Providing affordable units consistent with the policy would provide about 78.7 units. And those are offered as rental units and that, that is a note on the plan that the affordable units, um, there is an affordability note on the application plan. So that's one of our concerns. And then, uh, we have also raised transportation as one of our concerns. And Kevin is going to, um, start his portion of the presentation unless I went to through all that too quickly and we wanted to pause for questions. Like I said, we wanted to make sure we paused at certain intervals, but I think we were gonna wait till we got through the first rezoning to get to questions if that's okay with, with the chair. Yeah. Keep going.
All right, thank you. Uh, once again, Kevin McDermott, Transportation Planning Manager here at Alamo County. Um, the, uh, Old Ivy Residences, uh, did perform a traffic impact analysis as part of their, uh, proposal. And, uh, the, um, the Institute of Traffic Engineers trip generation calculation for the total number of trips for this project would be 4,326, uh, daily trips added to Old Ivy Road. Um, the, the traffic impact analysis or TIA did identify that existing conditions in this area, uh, primarily on the western side of the bypass. At the, um, at the locations you see there numbered one and two, one is Ivy Road and Canterbury Road intersection. And number two is the Old Ivy Road 29 off ramp. Uh, existing conditions that those are, are currently failing for many movements, um, and, and poor all around. Uh, I will add that, um, I, I will add that, uh, that the county and VDOT have been aware of these issues out there and we have been studying, uh, the situation, trying to identify potential improvements. We have not fully, uh, identified or vetted, uh, specific improvements yet, although there are some op, options that we're looking at. We are still evaluating those to find out if they're feasible. And then if they are determined to feasible, we would need to identify funding for that. So that's where that, uh, process of evaluating potential fixes for some of those, uh, alternatives are, for some of those issues are. We are also looking at, um, at the other end, uh, just on the, just north of the number five you see on the map there. Uh, Old Ivy Road crosses under the railroad, uh, railroad line and it is a very narrow crossing. Uh, we see a significant number of pedestrians going through here, which has also been a, a cause for concern from the county, from VDOT and from the university. Uh, and we've been looking at trying to find opportunities to improve that situation. Once again, we have not identified specific improvements or funding for it, but we are looking at some potential options. The traffic impact analysis did also show that, um, with the proposed addition of the, that 4,326, uh, daily trips, there would be, uh, additional delays primarily at those same intersections. So the delays would be extended beyond what they are currently with this, with this proposal. So, uh, getting to the 1985 proffer that Rebecca mentioned, um, the, uh, ZMA 1985 21 was approved with a proffer that limited density to the R1 level until Old Ivy Road is quote, "improved to the satisfaction of the Board of Supervisors of Alamo County." Uh, it, there is not a lot of specificity to that proffer, as you can tell. Um, the, the minutes from that, that, uh, board hearing, um, did discuss such improvements such as the lack of curb and gutter throughout the entire corridor, uh, narrow lanes and, and, and the desire to have a 30-foot, uh, roadway width from curb to curb to fit those 12-foot, uh, 12-foot lanes, which would be ideal. Uh, some of those improvements have been complete. I would say actually most of them have been complete. There's curb and gutter along a lot of that section of Old Ivy now, uh, and, and most of the section does have, uh, that 30-foot width. So that a lot of that piece has been complete. Another item that was discussed in that public hearing was the realignment of Old Ivy Road under the railroad inter, underpass, the one I pointed out to you earlier on, uh, near number five there. Uh, there has been no change in that. As I mentioned, it is still a cause for concern for us. Um, and also the provision of sidewalks on at least one side of Old Ivy Road. That is partially complete, um, on the south side of Old Ivy Road with all the development that the university has, has had out there. They have added sidewalks along a significant portion of that. Um, but, but definitely they do not go through the entire corridor. Uh, the intersections west of the bypass were not specifically identified at that time. But we do know now, as I mentioned, they do exhibit pretty poor operations. Um, and based on that analysis, the staff doesn't really consider that the 1985 proffer has been satisfied. The proposed improvements that the applicant has, I, has, uh, committed to through either their application plan or for proffers include the following. Uh, they propose a future bus stop along the site frontage of Old Ivy Road. Currently that area is not served by any transit service, but, um, it is very possible that we could get transit service. At one point in time, the university did have some transit service out on Old Ivy. It just no longer exists right now. Uh, another item that they are proffering is, um, a shared use path. Uh, they have that shown across the frontage, as you can see there in the solid blue line. And then they have also proffered to extend that shared use path all the way through to Ivy Gardens. You can see that in the, the dotted blue line, uh, shown on your screen there. Um, and they, they have proffered to construct that if the necessary right of way is donated by the current property owners. If the owners will not donate that right of way, the developer has offered to provide the county with $500,000 for construction of that path so that the county could do it as a public project in the future. Um, they have also, uh, added a, um, pedestrian crossing of Old Ivy Road at the site frontage. As I mentioned, there is sidewalk on the south side right now, so that would provide some connectivity. And, uh, also that provides the connection for the, um, for the Ravanna Trail, which goes through there and crosses the road. Uh, also a, um, right turn, the US 29 bypass right there, uh, just on the west end of their property. Um, they, there are other, uh, potential improvements such as a shared use path, uh, connecting to Leonard Sandridge. But all that is, um, is subject to the, uh, availability of easements and discussions that are ongoing between the developer and other property owners. Overall, staff sees a lot of value in those proposed improvements. However, there are remaining unaddressed transportation issues. And those include the poor operations of the intersections west of the bypass in both the future no build condition that get measurably worse with the proposed development. Um, the railroad overpass on the eastern end is severely constrained. It's got poor site distance. We have, we're aware of flooding issues, insufficient width, and then it, uh, the angle that it hits, um, Ivy Road at is a substandard, makes it a substandard intersection. You can see the pictures of that, uh, overpass and the issues are, are pretty apparent there. And then the, um, lack of pedestrian connectivity to the surrounding system. As I mentioned, um, there are some existing pedestrian facilities on Old Ivy. Uh, the developers proposing to provide some more, but those do not connect to anything beyond that, that small area of Old Ivy right there. Uh, around the, the development and some of those, uh, uh, UVA facilities. And that's all for transportation.
Okay, we mentioned that there were two other requests associated with this, one of which is the step back waiver request. You've seen, um, that as a, as a frequently requested item with apartment buildings that want to go up to four stories. So this request would apply to those, um, multifamily or apartment buildings that would potentially go up to four stories. That would waive the step back requirement. And staff doesn't have any concerns about it as far as it, um, producing what we call the canyon effect or any concerns with, um, building spacing or excuse me, uh, buildings and spaces of human scale with the building, um, spacing and the setbacks they indicated on that, the illustrative plan. And you can kind of see that on the illustrative plan. So we recommended approval of the step back waiver provided that, um, we get a little more information about setbacks on the application plan. And I've, I've shown you the setbacks, um, for the R15 district. The front setback is five feet. But it looked like that was a little bit increased from Old Ivy and that was a factor that they indicated in their step back waiver request. That was one of the, um, mini items in your packet this round. Um, the second reduction, or excuse me, the second special exception request was for a parking reduction. And we provided you the reduction in quest, requests in terms of what the ordinance requires for those types of units, one bedroom, two bedroom apartments and townhouses and what the proposed parking request was. And that was based on ITE figures comparison of similar sites, including, um, experience that Gray Star has with their properties in other locations. There was, and you know, we've, we've talked about how the transit stop will be provided and there are opportunities for multi-use paths to be provided. Um, staff's recommendation at this point is that, um, if the reduction request were approved, that it have a condition that those connections have to be made. Or at least the connection, the connection to Leonard Sad, Sandridge. Typically, these parking reduction requests are reviewed administratively and, and sites must provide certain things. And then the zoning administrator can reduce the parking, but because these things are not currently in place, it needs to be processed this way as a special exception. Um, we can pause now or we can go through the steep slopes overlay district. I know we're taking a little longer than we usually do with our presentations, but we do have the four separate items. The last thing is the steep slopes overlay rezoning. Um, I know we mentioned we have to have technically two public hearings. But I could go through that information and then we could, um, move to questions and comments and
and the other. It's all right, we'll just keep going. And then I think we can, we're jotting down questions so we can remember them.
We just wanted to make sure we gave you that opportunity because I
Sure, of course.
Want to run to it through, run through it too fast. So the second rezoning request and the last, um, app, item before you, the fourth item is a request to, um, amend the steep slopes overlay district. It's a, a district that was established in the zoning ordinance and created what we call preserved and managed slopes. So the preserved slopes are shown in green and the managed slopes are shown in yellow on the map to the right. And then the applicant provided a detailed analysis, um, of the slopes which are located on the northern portion of the site and western along the bypass. And then, um, as we've indicated here on the map, um, they provided in their packet an overlay of potential footprints and areas that may be disturbed. And that's shown with the left, the, on the left, the slopes are shown in red. And then there's another plan sheet that I'll show you that zoomed in a little bit. Um, it's 1.54 acres um, of preserved, or excuse me, preserved slope that they'd like to rezone to manage. There was that detailed analysis that gave the history of the site. We mentioned there's a lot of detailed history related with this property that the slopes are manmade and they're not associated with, um, a perennial stream or adjacent to a perennial stream. And that, and the applicant said that in some cases there might be improvement to, um, runoff. This is the, um, plan set. And this is the area that I mentioned extends, the travelway extends all the way back and up to adjacent to the bypass. The slopes are shown, um, in these areas adjacent to the bypass. And then in the middle of the property and you can see the areas that would be affected along the edges. Near the green space area or open space area is where the, some of the wetlands are located or the wetlands that are closest to the slopes and potentially disturbed areas. Um, the county engineer, um, did not object to the request, but we did point out in the staff report that wetlands are called out for preservation, um, in the comprehensive plan. And as part of the zoning ordinance analysis, um, we, we raised, um, some concerns about, um, both the, the note on the plan for wetlands preservation, rewording that. So it's, it achieves what, I believe the applicant intended as far as, um, not disturbing wetlands unless they absolutely had to. And then rewording it so that that would be subject to county engineer approval is one of the things we discussed with the applicant. I'm sure they'll bring that up with you. And then, um, we suggested maybe a second look at the areas where the slopes were because the request is to rezone all, change the zoning map to change these from preserved to managed. And, uh, the distinction is preserved slopes only allow for very limited things like trails and public facilities that can't go anywhere else. Managed slopes allow for all of the underlying buy right activities. Um, both are subject to, um, the design standards that are in the steep slopes, um, section of the zoning ordinance. Uh, wanted to mention all the public comment that we've received. Um, we've received both, um, letters of support. Touching on some of the things that I've already mentioned as far as the, the location and providing housing types. And then of course we've covered, um, the traffic and safety concerns and the, um, condition of Old Ivy Road. Just wanted to acknowledge that commission and staff has read all of those. Um, in summary, we're not recommending approval at this time. We acknowledge the positive aspects of this proposal. Um, but as we've noted, we have concerns with consistency with the affordable housing policy and, um, the traffic concerns. So that's our, that's the conclusion finally. Um, we have suggested motions for you later in the evening when you get to that.
Okay, thank you. Questions for staff?
What else? Most excited to ask?
Sure, real excited. Um, well, thank you for that great presentation. I just have a handful of questions. There were two intersections, Ivy and Canterbury and then Old Ivy Road and 29 off ramp. Guess what question? I want to use the, the right wording. Are they volatile? Maybe that's the word I'm looking for. Um, like are there a number of traffic incidents there? That, that, that currently happen as is. Yeah, I didn't want to use the word safe or unsafe, but, um, maybe volatile is the word.
Um, there, we have not identified those is significantly problematic safety issues currently. Uh, the biggest concern I think we have with that area is that, um, in the, primarily in the AM peak hour, we are noticing that the, um, that the queue lengths are extending up the ramp and approaching the main line of 29. And we are, uh, afraid that if that continues to get, to be a busier intersection, that those, um, those queue lengths could get into the, uh, into the 29 main line and and cause significant safety concerns.
Okay, uh, thank you. And then the second question is more from my knowledge. Do proffers, for lack of a better term, have like a statute of limitations on them or anything? Like 1985 was almost 40 years ago. So are they in perpetuity? I was just curious.
If, yes.
The short answer is yes.
Okay.
All right. Unless, unless or until amended by the board supervisors.
Okay, I have two more. We keep going. Could you define in layman's terms, what is a class B type one primitive trail? Like, what are the characteristics of that?
That's compacted earth or mulch or stone dust. Not a paved path.
Sure. Does a county have to maintain that?
The, in this case, the applicant would maintain that or whatever relationship they have with Ravanna Trails.
Okay. And then last and final question, I promise. Does the county have standards that define like what's acceptable for documenting sites and buildings before they're demolished? I just read that there was a property with some outbuildings on the parcel there. Is there a standard? Because if not, you guys do a napkin sketch and be done with it.
Right, the, the historic preservation planner, demolition permits are required. And as part of that, then the historic preservation planner takes a look at them. And they will typically reach out to the applicant and discuss with them, you know, voluntary documentation. And we offer assistance either with, with the historic preservation committee member or staff person so that we can get that level of detail, the applicants or the property owners aren't required to provide us that access. They could do it themselves, but we provide them as much guidance as we can as part of that process.
Thank you.
Okay.
Could, could we go back to the, to one of your first maps where it had the various, the various parcels and then they were in, I think, a mustard color or golden color and then they had
The zoning map, sir?
Keep going.
Or what did you want?
This is fine, this is fine, that's fine. Which, where you've landed is fine. If you could just sort of use your pointer and, and help me understand what could be done today?
So that's where there's, the proffer comes into play.
The eighty-five proffer.
Yes, sir. So these parcels, the, I'm not using my pointer, accidentally turned it off. So the dark brown is R fifteen. That is subject to that R one parcel, excuse me, proffer. And then there's this little bit of lighter brown that is also subject to the proffer. The avocado green, we do call this our retro zoning palette, is the, the R one parcel. And then this table is what was provided by the applicant. We didn't match up our colors, so, but the R fifteen parcels are in the, the lightest tan. And then their acreage along with the acreage of the R one, if that's helpful.
But so if I understand it, the R fifteen is about twenty-seven acres today. If I did my quick math, it's about twenty-seven acres. I, I don't use the point something, I use the whole numbers.
Yes, so it is majority of.
And so today they could do whatever R fifteen on twenty-seven acres is.
If the board deemed that transportation proffer satisfied.
Okay, so that's, that's where.
So that's a proper.
Even though, even though that's, that's, that's R fifteen and it was dealt with in, in eighty-five. The condition precedent about the board agreeing to the conditions on Old Ivy Road still would govern what you could do on there.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last.
I think he's saying if they could not develop it unless the board's stipulation is met with regards to traffic and road condition and whatnot.
Yes, so that board would have to take that matter up to, to, to make that decision. So without that step, it's R one.
Well, it, it could be developed as an R one.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
At the R one density.
Right, but not as the R fifteen.
Not as the R fifteen, thank you.
Yes? I have just a quick question, or maybe, I hope it's quick. In, in your, in your memory, in, in terms of looking at lots of applications for rezonings and special use permits and all of that. Have, have you encountered other applications where they offered the affordable housing percentage only based on the difference between by right and the expanded number of units with a rezoning?
Um, not, well, you know, my roles changed a lot over the years, so my memory there's back to two thousand ten and then there's today or December going forward, but no, not. There might've been one along the way that was a long time ago, but recently we saw this type of request with another one. But I don't know which one it was off the top of my head and what those numbers were, but I think it's been some time. And obviously after, since we've updated our affordable housing policy.
I am just trying to get a sense of how unusual that is because I have been on this commission for eight and a half years and I don't recall one. At least in terms of this body. All right, I just wanted to understand the, the uniqueness of that. Okay.
Let me just add one thing. So, so let me just add a piece to what you respond to, to my colleague Corey about the, about the AM lineup on, I guess it's the St. Anne's Bellfield part of the road over there.
Uh, yeah, the off ramp.
I could, I could, having spent a great deal of time over in that particular area because of having offices and things like that over there that, that my staff was in. It happens in the afternoon too. In fact, we've been advising people never to use that, that, that road there. But to go underneath the inner pass and use the cloverleaf because that is an unpredictable sort of intersection and particularly, I mean, it's probably better now because the kids are out of school. The St. Anne kids are out of school, the Belfort kids are out of school. But during the year, it's, don't ever, we, I mean, it's, it's to the point where we don't advise people to go to do that, just to so that people know that. Yeah, so you should, so you should know that if you only see it in the AM, you should know that in the PM during school. It looks more like, a lot like chicken out.
You did remind me of another question I had there related to traffic. Which was, did the, did the traffic study that was done account for the new UVA buildings that have been built and all of the additional? Was, was, was that, is that traffic fully flowing? Was that part of this analysis?
Yes, I believe that the counts were done when UVA was in session for this.
I, I mean that they build a number of new, new structures that have added traffic. And I'm just curious as to whether the traffic impact study was done when they, those were open and fully functioning. The new buildings.
Yes, they would have, it would have been done. I, when we reviewed the, the TIA, we believe that the, that it accurately depicts the existing conditions out there.
Okay.
What, what you, what was the date of the traffic study?
Uh, let me try and pull that up. It'll take me just one second to find the specific date that those counts were done. Sorry, it's gonna, it's gonna take me one second. My computer's.
If you can get, get it to us at, at some point today, because it would be interesting to see if, if that was done during time where COVID was in play and, and certainly the, the one UVA structure that's there on Old Ivy Road. Even today is still not up, up to its capacity.
I would commute on that road to UVA once a week and I saw them going up and I, I didn't recall that they were completely done, operational, all the traffic.
They were done, but then COVID hit, people went home from that facility and many of them have not come back yet.
Right, so I got you.
I will add our standards for the TIAs. If we believe that COVID may be a factor in the existing counts, we have been having the developer or the, the traffic engineer add traffic into that, into those counts so that we can accurately predict that. There is also, there is a background growth rate that's, that's assumed in there as well. So we, we didn't find any issues with the existing counts. I know that the, the traffic engineer that performed that study is available from the, when the, the developer comes up to speak, so they might, they might go to.
We can get the data.
Be better questions.
Yeah, I, I just have a couple of questions. I think most of mine have been covered, but and Kevin, just clarification on the, so on the VDOT efforts and, and planning that I believe there are several planning studies that have taken place, including underneath the trussel. Can you tell us where those are at? I mean, have they been completed? Are they still looking at that? Are the, is the planning funded or is it not even started yet?
The, the planning is funded. VDOT has, is performing those, those studies with state funding, state planning funding. They had put together a draft report that identified some options that may have worked really well. However, most of those options were too expensive for us to move forward with. So what, where they are right now is they have gone back and they are evaluating some lower cost solutions. And there are some that we have identified that we think are promising. Some, some that would be, you know, well under the, the half a million dollar mark. So something I think would be reasonable for the county and or VDOT to identify funding for. But what they're doing is they are currently evaluating those options, running them through models to make sure they will work. And then we've got to find the money for it. So I think it's probably going to be a few more months down the line before we see any results from, from those studies. And, and find out whether or not those options are going to work. And then once again, then we have to find the money to implement them.
Thank you.
Hey, if there's, is there anything more for the staff or, okay, I think they were ready to move on to hearing. Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I have some questions. There's an unusual spot where the Ravanna Trail seems to be constrained between development on the map. And I, I was wondering, how is that going to be characterized in that area? It doesn't, doesn't really look buffered by vegetation at all. What exactly is that site going to be like? The character of the trail in that area? So, yeah, you're, no, yeah, you're on it right there. That, that spot right there is, is that a, what is that exactly? Is that a, what is that?
You said, what, what is that exactly?
Yeah, what, what is that? Is that just a?
Is it a strip of green space?
Yes, it's one of, it's one of the amenity space areas. So it would be routed through green space behind, as it gets closer to units, it is going to be routed between them. In a green space area, there will be a crossing provided, pedestrian crossing for safety as it will go through on the other side to connect to the existing purple section.
It looks like buildings are coming pretty close to there. Is there going to be buffering vegetation or anything between the trail and the buildings or? Doesn't look like there is on the map.
The applicant may speak to what they intend, but there isn't any higher level of detail for that area than what's provided on the application plan. As far as green space. There isn't a certain planting plan that's been proposed or anything since it is a, a concept plan at this point. But those things are what we need your feedback on and the applicant will probably respond to that in their presentation as well.
In the, in the preserve slopes, I, I assume this is not an all or none proposal. Could the applicant not propose to, as, as opposed to re-characterizing all of the slopes as from preserved to managed, just designate a portion of the slopes to be managed as opposed to the whole block?
That is something, that's not what's before us this evening, but there have been rezonings in the, the commission, sorry, before you, we're, just before you that we would need to establish, you know, a new plan and a topo line or something for us to follow on GIS. So that is a possibility as far as something that could be done, but we haven't. The applicant hasn't proposed that yet, or it, or might not.
Okay, and then another, another question regarding the transportation. My wife and I had observed a car flooded up to its windows within the past month or two under that, under that railroad. Is there VDOT data on? I know you have accident data, but does that include damage from flooding, people caught in floods? Maybe fatalities involving flooding at that intersection?
There, that would not be included in our crash data for that. It is something that I believe VDOT could track because when those issues come about, when people call in, then, and they get a service call for it, they do record that. I don't have the numbers for that. I'm just aware that, that, that VDOT does get occasional calls on the, on that flooding.
Has fire and rescue made any comments about his proposal?
And we didn't, now the emergency access is provided and the fire marshal has reviewed that as far as the emergency access connection. And then when we get to site plan, they'll need to meet all the fire code requirements, but I don't believe there were any other comments as far as difficulty in accessing the site during, for service calls.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we'd like to hear then the presentation from the applicant. So if the applicant, whoever's going to speak, approach the podium and then please tell us your name and organization. And you may need to move the mic around. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, Commissioners, my name is John Clarkson. I'm Managing Director of Gray Star Real Estate Partners. We are based in Charleston, South Carolina. I represent Division in Washington DC. We're extremely excited to be here tonight to talk about this very important project. This is actually, we do entitlement across the country. It's the first time in two and a half years that we've been able to do this face to face, so really appreciate you all having us. This project to us is critically important. You know, there's an affordability crisis going on across the country. I don't need to talk to you all about it, but it's certainly, you're not immune to that here in, in Oakmont County. We think we have a project here that is very appropriate for what is defined by the zoning. We intend to build a very thoughtful and well-designed project that meets the housing demand. But also while doing that appropriately with our neighbors and be, becoming an important part of the community. We, we intend to adhere to young professionals as well as grad students. We have two students, former students with us today from Darden, know the community well. And it's critically important that we design this to meet the needs, but also to become an integral part of the community. And so with that, we're going to talk a little bit more about the proposal. Valerie Long, our land use council, to walk through it, but again, really appreciate you all having us here tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the commission, I'm Valerie Long with the law firm of Williams Mullen, here representing the applicant, as they said. Thank you for those good questions. I do have some quick answers, but I'm very cognizant of my time. So I might ask to come back and address those later, if I may. I'm going to skip through the areas that you've already seen and talked about. We're happy to elaborate more on the zoning, Mr. Biddens, specifically to answer your question. I think Ms. Raxiel answered it, but just for clarification, she's correct. Until the proffer is deemed satisfied, the proffer requires that the R fifteen parcels could only be developed at an R one level of density, which of course is not at all consistent with the comprehensive plan. There is quite a history about the comprehensive plan. We covered that in great detail in our narrative, but in case you didn't have a chance to read it. The primary reason based on our research that the area in green was shown that way was because when this map was adopted in two thousand fifteen, the property was owned by VDOT because it was part of the western bypass land. Not too long after, the project was canceled, the land was sold back to the owners. Unfortunately, the map has not come back up for amendment since then. But staff, this is one of the very first things we discussed at the pre-application meeting. And we were advised by senior staff that they understood the issue, they would not interpret it strictly. That what they would be looking for was for the applicant to preserve the sensitive environmental areas. And we believe that is what we're doing. We hope you will agree. Happy to talk more about that. This is the prior land use map from nineteen ninety-six, the most prior version to that, as you can see, the entire area was shown for urban density residential at that time. We have maps of the area. I'm sure you all are familiar with it. You may have been out there. As Ms. Raxiel indicated, there are sidewalks in many of the areas, not all of them. This is the, what would essentially be the, the existing driveway or the future driveway as well as the existing driveway. There's sidewalks and utilities there as well. You can see the entrance up above. I'm going to be quick because of our time. That there is a building that was added by the university. Recently, this shows the entrance to the Ravanna Trail. As you can see, there's no sidewalk there, whether along Old Ivy or across the street. We would address both of those issues. We've had a lot of meetings with the community over the years, as Mr. Clarkson said. They have from the very beginning been very focused on being a good neighbor, outreach to the community. We've had neighborhood meetings, several meetings with our most adjacent neighbors at University Village and Huntington Village. We've been very, worked, worked very closely with staff, resubmitted the application a total of four times in an effort to continually improve it based on the staff's feedback and comments. This was included with our application to specifically address the nineteen eighty-five proffer. Again, I would be happy to discuss this in more detail, but as hopefully you will see, there have been, in fact, quite a number of improvements to this corridor since nineteen eighty-five. Most significantly, the university's construction of Leonard Sandridge Drive, which obviously took a tremendous amount of traffic off of Old Ivy. But as Ms. Raxiel, or Mr. McDermott indicated, there's been But as Ms. Ragsil, Mr. McDermott indicated, there's been a lot of widening, curb and gutter sidewalks. Essentially of the three deficiencies that were discussed in the 1985 proffers, really the only outstanding one is the railroad trestle. We certainly understand and agree that is a problem. And we are comforted and encouraged by Mr. McDermott's comments about how closely they are working with VDOT and the university representatives to address that issue. And that I know that VDOT has some ideas they're working with, as he indicated, nothing's been funded yet. But we're optimistic, Gray Star's indicated a willingness to contribute to that solution. That request or offer remains outstanding. So we think based on those issues being satisfied or potentially able to be satisfied in the near future, combined with all of these other improvements that have been made, and frankly, combined with all of the development that has occurred around since 1985. We think the most important thing is the location of housing inside the existing scarce development area, close to our community's largest employer. And not to mention graduate schools and other destinations close in. That is the most, that is how it's, we think will serve the community the best. Not approving the project will obviously not make the transportation challenges go away. It will only exacerbate them. We think that the proffers and other commitments that the applicant is making will certainly overcome any additional trips that are added, and we think improve it at least to a marginal degree. Mr. McDermott highlighted the proposed improvements along the frontage. Most significantly, the pedestrian bicycle path across the entire frontage. That will also connect the end of the Ravenna Trail to the sidewalk here in this location. People using the trail could come across, and then this committed sidewalk that would cross them over to the exist, where there is an existing sidewalk, substantially improving the safety for users of the trail. And of course, just the fact that the applicant is voluntarily committing to retain the Ravenna Trail for the benefit, not only of its residents, but the community is significant. It's not required. The existing easement is a license that's revocable. We've also proffered to either construct or contribute financially to the extension of that multi-use path, bike ped path across the frontage. If so, that would be an additional distance of 1,275 feet of bike ped trail. And in a moment, I'll show you how that, if that were to happen, that would actually connect to an existing path that goes all the way back to Leonard Sandridge. As you can see, there are a number of sidewalks, the entire plan is committed to those sidewalks that are shown in blue. There, we think these frontage improvements are substantial. The applicant cannot make offsite improvements voluntarily or unilaterally. What it can do is control and improve its frontage, things that it has the legal ability to do, it is committing to do. There's also significantly a full turn lane that's dedicated to the northbound ramp. So any residents coming out of the project could immediately get into a right turn lane and then get onto the northbound ramp if they were heading downtown. So even if they have to get in their car to go to work, they will be able to jump right on the bypass and not contribute to the traffic, at least in the mornings at the, in the areas where it's congested. And again, the night, as Mr. McDermott said, the night, in 1985, the concerns did not involve those congested intersections over at Canterbury and by the Bell Air Market. The concern was about Old Ivy itself. I'll be quick. I've got one more minute. This is our application plan. As Ragsdale covered, most of it, we are obviously happy to go into as much detail as you would like. We think this, the amount of commitment here is substantial, commitment to two different types of housing, lots of open space, lots of sidewalks. We are very hopeful we'll be able to construct that path. We don't have the ability to do it on our own, but we are in conversation with some of the adjacent landowners and we will continue that. The density, when you factor in the issues we described about the master plan, we're preserving over eight acres in open space. It's fully consistent. When you look at it in context with the comprehensive plan. There's some detail here, types of properties, variety of housing types. As I think was noted, this will be an entirely for rent community, which is a type of products not available in this area at all. And then finally, the project benefits, obviously it's central location, it's a unique housing type. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan, preserves the sensitive environmental areas. We're also committing to a transit stop on site. We hope that UVA shuttle will come back. And I didn't have a chance to talk about it, but we also, or Gray Star was very intentional with how it designed the site to have the higher density and taller apartment buildings as far away from their neighbors as possible. And this lower density, shorter buildings closer to them, and we'd be happy to elaborate on that more.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Long. This is the period where we have time to question the applicant about anything in the application itself or anything that Ms. Long has just said.
Yes, could you?
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Could you characterize that community space that I, that I highlighted on the Ravenna Trail?
Oh, yes.
That little narrow area?
Yes, thank you for reminding me. Let me, this is a slide I didn't get to. So thank you for the opportunity. This is an illustrative plan based on our, if I can back up just for clarification. This is our proffered concept plan. So we're committing, and in our proffer state this, that we would develop the property in general accord of this plan. And then we specifically identify important elements of this plan. And one of them is the Ravenna Trail. So this is the conceptual plan that will be binding, including all those notes that are on there. But we know that's kind of hard to understand what you're looking at. So we also had a land planner prepare an illustrative plan showing the vision here. And if I may, here, this is the proposed location of how the trail would be routed through. It's a little hard to see. If I could zoom in a little bit, let me see if I can make that work. There we go. We have identified that area with sidewalks and designated open space, so it would go through kind of a little green space area to, you know, it obviously will be going through a neighborhood, so we want to highlight it, but it, we also want to integrate, Gray Star wants to integrate it into the neighborhood. So it becomes not only an amenity for those using the Ravenna Trail and passing through the community, but also the residents of the community. So that is one area. You know, most of the rest of it, it will go through open space in the natural areas. But in this area, we won't, because we need to connect to where it, it ends offsite. That's how we designed it there. Again, this is conceptual for now, but we did commit to having some green space around. Kind of to address your question, Mr. Murray, is to provide a little bit of buffering and space, so you're not running right next to someone's house, but there's a little bit of green space.
You say that you are preserving environmentally sensitive areas. What are you doing to protect the integrity of those environmentally sensitive areas, including the wetlands, for example? Are you doing anything to keep invasive species from spreading to those wetlands that may be used in plantings, for example?
Don't know that we've gotten into the issue of invasive species at this time. We do show that on the plans, that there are a handful of isolated wetlands areas. And on our concept plan, we're showing that those areas are not being disturbed. As Ms. Ragsdale indicated, and you probably saw in your staff report, we did indicate that we, we tried to demonstrate a very high standard and commit to a very high standard for not disturbing those wetlands to the greatest extent possible. However, our engineers have clarified and made us aware that because they haven't designed the site yet, they don't know with 100% certainty, they can stay out of every single square inch of the wetlands. And there is a process, you probably are familiar with, to, in, in those events, there, there is a process to work with the core to allow very, very limited disturbance if necessary. There's all sorts of mitigation requirements as a result. And so what we did was, we weren't comfortable saying 100%, we guarantee we'll stay out of every inch of wetlands. But we added a note to the proffered concept plan that says it is the intent of the applicant to not disturb them at all. And to use, I think it's the maximum extent practical to avoid them, but however, if we need to disturb any, we'll coordinate with the core and with the county and any other parties to do that. So I just wanted to clarify that issue. Ms. Ragsiel did suggest that it might be better to change that language or at least add to it to say that, that the county engineer would have to review that and confirm whether that standard has been met. We think that's implied, but we're certainly happy to add that. So that's with wetlands. With regard to the other sensitive environmental areas, there is a stream over here that has a water protection ordinance buffer. And while you can't see it on this plan, on our concept plan, the outline of that 100-foot WPO buffer, stream buffer is shown, and we've committed to stay out of that area. We also had that area delineated early on by the core, so we were certain to know exactly of where its boundaries are. The other issues are preserving the natural wooded area here. The Gray Star representatives will tell you, one of the main things they loved about this site from the time they saw it was its extensive natural area and the ability to preserve as much of that as possible and make it an amenity for the community. So we've really worked hard to do that. With regard to the preserved slopes, as Ms. Ragsdale indicated, they are zoned as preserved slopes, but they are no doubt man-made. When the Western, the Western Bypass, when Leonard Sandridge Drive was constructed, this area was permitted as a, I'm sure the term is a waste area, so the dirt from building the road was piled here. And that was just one of numerous times the area has been disturbed over the years based on the aerial imagery. So while it is near this pond, those man-made slopes don't have the same characteristics as other preserved slopes. And I can, I probably want the civil engineers to provide more detail about it. But what they've explained to me is that if the project is approved, that actually the ability to go in and have an engineer design plan here will actually improve the environmental features by reducing those areas and preserving the other areas that provide much greater benefit environmentally.
I, I think one of the great potentials of this site is if there was mass transit option, that you could have a pedestrian oriented development here. I think one of the big concerns for me are definitely the cars. And for that matter, you couldn't get a bus under those railroad, railroads right now, I don't believe. And, and so I think, you know, have you considered, you know, I think you're proposing one point, something like 1.35 parking spaces per unit. Have you considered asking for even less than that?
And just to clarify, it's 1.35, I believe, just for the apartments, for the townhouses, it's 1.6. And then no change for other single family. First of all, I will say that the, and I think many of you maybe know this or would agree, certainly what our developer clients tell me is that the county's parking regulations substantially are require substantially more parking spaces than are actually needed for multifamily units. Sounds like maybe you would agree. But regardless, what Gray Star has asked is to not have to build more parking spaces than it needs. It would much rather save that land and put it towards amenity areas, green space, et cetera. So they have based, they manage a lot of apartments around the country. And so based on their experience for a community like this and a location like this, they have looked at this very, with a lot of fine detail. And what they've proposed, they think is exactly the right amount. They have to have enough to be able to lease the units. They don't want to build more than they need. It may, if, if things work out well with transit, as I think we stated, we're committing to have a transit stop on site. We'd coordinate the location of that with CAT or maybe UVA if they reinstate their Old Ivy shuttle. That could prove to be significant enough that they could reduce it even more. But what they've asked for is what they think is the right ratio right now, based on what they know. They always have the ability to build, I shouldn't say they could build less if they'd want, they'd probably have to come back and ask staff for an amendment to that parking reduction request. But what they've proposed in that request is what they think makes sense. So you may be right about the railroad trestles. I think the one near the Bell Air Market might be okay, but even if it's not, there are other, again, the UVA shuttle bus was essentially like a jaunt bus size. Something or like the buses that are out in Croze, the Croze Connect buses, shorter ones that can navigate those railroad underpasses more effectively. Those are things we haven't worked that out, but those are the types of things that they are hopeful that could be implemented. So, thank you.
Hello, Ms. Long. Thank you for, for being here. And I just have a couple of questions and I'll, I'll pass the buck and I'll, I have more later, depending on what my other colleagues say. But could you, I think the elephant in the room obviously is affordable housing determination. And did you spend some time to speaking to that and why you all decided to do something that's different than what we believe is in the county policy?
Sure. First of all, they're committed to affordable housing and proffered and put a lot of thought into this. As noted earlier, the land is zoned R15, not all of it, but the vast majority, as Mr. Bivins indicated, about 27 acres are zoned R15. So we're not asking for an increase for those parcels in terms of units. Yes, the 85 proffer does regulate that for purposes of traffic. But for purposes of actually allowing those units, that land was rezoned R15 back in 1985. So what we did was we, we did a granular look at exactly how many units could be built by right across the entire property based on the R15 zoning for those parcels. And the R1 zoning that's on, there's a five acre parcel that's zoned R1. So, and the reality is you could build 400 and I think it's 30 units by right. And so what we're asking is to go from 430 to 525 and then commit to have 15% of the units over and above be affordable housing. There is precedent for this. The county has approved that. I know you asked Ms. Rags, it may have been before her time or wasn't involved. Two that I was involved in personally, one is the project on Rio Road called Oakley. That project, I worked on the zoning for that twice. Originally, it was zoned R6. And we rezoned it, I think, to neighborhood model. And it was going to have, I can't remember how many units. But when the assisted living facility came along and wanted to, we had to amend the zoning to allow the assisted living facility, which reduced the number of units. And when we came back and amended the proffer, we asked for, the county had begun to grant so-called, what the term uses, buy right lot yield credit. At the time, it was against cash proffers when those were being accepted as well as affordable housing. We asked for that credit and the board granted it. Likewise, I was also involved in a project on Rio Road. It's called the Loftset Meadow Creek. It's across from Treesdale. And likewise, the board granted buy right lot yield credit for that project as well. So a lot of times when you see rezonings, and some I've been involved in, if the underlying zoning across the board is R1 or RA such that the buy right lot yield credit is very small, it's kind of not worth worrying about because you're not, it's just not worth worrying about. So it's the easier thing is just to say, okay, fine, we'll do 15% of all of those units. It's really a difference of maybe sometimes two or three units. In this case, it's a difference of a substantial amount of units. And so we're trying to, again, keep in mind, we very intentionally did not propose to increase the zoning on those parcels above what it was approved for back in 1985. So we're, we think it's appropriate, given that we're not essentially upzoning those parcels to commit to the affordable housing that reflects the upzoned units. So again, I hope that answers your question. I know that it is a challenge right now. No one disputes the challenges of affordable housing, housing in general. We think that the benefits this project will provide to the community by having this many units close in to our largest employer in an area, obviously, that's designated for much higher density and can contribute to some improvements, multimodal and others, that when you balance all of that together along that when you balance all of that together along with the affordable housing that has been proffered or committed to, that that addresses the policy. But I know there's probably, others may disagree.
Thank you for the background info. I think you're aware of the, just the perception of how challenging that would be to have 500 some units and you walk out with 14 affordable. So just kind of putting yourself in my seat, that's going to be very, very challenging. In terms of sustainability, and I ask this question to almost every applicant that comes up here. You know, that's really important to our community and our vision, sustainability, climate action, our comprehensive plan and so forth. Can you talk a little bit about, you know, how you're going to help us take steps towards achieving that vision through this project particularly? So whether the site design or building design, I know it's early, but I do, I'm an architect, so I know those conversations are happening right now. Could you share a little bit about how you're going to help us achieve that vision through this project?
Yes. Well, first, thank you. I'm glad you asked me that because I neglected to raise that as one of the many benefits of the community. I know that there's many who say that one of the best things you can do for reducing carbon emissions is have people drive less. Whether it's transit or having them be able to walk to work, walk to destinations, frankly, use their car less, right? And so frankly, by virtue of locating these homes within a close in location, close to a large employer, close to other destinations, that that will have a significant impact on climate action, just by definition, definition of its location. Our, you know, the fact that the community has been designed with sidewalks throughout the community to foster and support that will help. We're committing to the multimodal improvements, the bike ped trails in numerous locations, the transit stop if, if available. All of those things will help. Gray Star also in its communities regularly incorporates features like bike storage lockers in their buildings and bikes that you can borrow to use, programs like that. Those will help address and further those goals as well.
Did you talk any about the, the building side? I mean, once you build them, they're here for 50 to 75 years. Could you talk anything about the conversations you guys are having with that?
I, I don't know that we've gotten to that point yet. I could certainly invite them to come up, but we have not gotten to the point yet of design, building materials, those sorts of things at this stage.
I'm, I'm good for down, mad on chair. I'll come back later.
Sure. Thank you.
And just, just for the record, we are not asking you to proffer, design things on the spot. Just to be clear that that is not happening up on this diet. No, he will not be. Thank you. Who would like to go next? Luis?
Yes, just a clarification. So the, the density is happening in the, in the gray blocks that we're seeing right now and beyond those gray blocks, we don't really know much about it, right? So is that all four story buildings, setbacks? Can you tell us a little bit about that? Cause again, let's, you know, whether or not even the width of the, I'm assuming the width would be accurate to your development, but it's hard to see from this.
Sure.
Illustration.
So first just clarification, this is an illustrative plan, but I'm happy to go back at any point to the concept. Sure. I'm going to let Dan, oh, you introduce yourself.
Hi, everyone. I'm Dan Nickerson. I've been working on this project since January of 2020. And the design is the fun part, so I'm happy to walk you through some of that. So a couple of things, one, one additional thing that we do specifically to climate change is we add EV chargers to all of our projects. We see more and more cars going that way and people wanting to drive cars to reduce carbon emissions. And we're planning on adding EV chargers, charging stations to this project. I think we have, just zoom out here. So here's some illustrative renderings of the project. So this is of the townhomes kind of as you're going towards the Stormwater Pond. Obviously, these are not kind of the full details. These are very early renderings. But just to give you a sense of scale and size, here's another one of just kind of farther above, kind of how we've tried to hide the parking. To your point earlier about what you run through, kind of having these muse and, and having these areas where people can really enjoy their neighbors. Here, here's another one. You can see to your question, these are four story buildings, the, the main apartment buildings. And I think late, sure thing, sorry.
Which one's the four story building?
So the, the, kind of those big white blocks in the back that aren't, aren't very.
Ones that look like barns.
Yes, so. Uh, sure. Sorry. Can you? So ju- just to be specific, th- those are not, and I'm going to get to an elevation. That, that, that is not detailed out yet in these renderings. These are really just to give you a size and, and shape. So this is kind of an early design concept that we have. These are four story buildings. Their elevators, product interior corridors. We've also tried to add in some symmetry and brick to kind of make these look while modern, also fit in with the overall aesthetic.
So, and all four or I don't know if there's.
Okay, it's five.
Yeah, all five of those are the, the same scale.
Yes.
Including the ones that are up against the road.
Yes.
And so right now, we don't really understand what the setback is. I know you're asking for a step back amendment, but we don't really have anything that's showing setbacks anywhere or even height of building, right?
Yes, so, so at this.
I didn't see that in the, in the application. That's why I'm asking.
Yes. And from my understanding, and Valerie probably speak more to this. From my understanding, at this point, we, we don't proffer any of those things. So we don't necessarily, and we haven't gotten to that level of design. This is, we could show you kind of the heights.
And I, I mean, I'm not asking you to proffer any, any of that. I'm asking to understand it because you're asking for a, an, an amendment to the, to, in a waiver.
Along the travel way. Yep.
Well, all the step backs.
Step backs.
In order for us to understand that and, and, you know, begin to, to review whether that, we can grant that waiver, we really need to understand more about the building, the height, the setbacks and so forth. And I, and, and I'm asking, cause just to give you the opportunity to clarify, because I didn't see any of that in the application.
Go to the concept plan. This is a copy of the proffered concept plan. And the areas in tan are the building envelopes committed to for the buildings. We weren't aware of the concern about needing a setback to be established until we saw the staff report. But I think the suggestion was for a five foot setback along the front. We could certainly do that. Regardless, we have proffered or committed to develop the property in general accord with this plan, which would require the buildings to be located in those envelopes. And so I believe that effectively creates some set setbacks. But to the extent that's not sufficient, I think we're happy to clarify that on the plans to address the concern. We just weren't aware of it before we got the staff report, so.
You weren't, I'm sorry, you, you, I, I didn't quite, you weren't aware of the, of, of what in particular until the staff report?
We weren't aware of the, of the concern that there was not a setback established on the plans. Because this is going to be an entirely rent for rent community as opposed to, you know, part of a subdivision plot where you'd have each of those lots subdivided in the future with each one, each individual lot. Having a setback established, we understood that the entire, the R15 setbacks would apply to the entire parcel. Regardless, we're fine committing to adding a five foot setback so that those, to just confirm and give everyone the comfort of knowing the building's not going to be right up next to the road. It will be close to the road. We think that is consistent with the county's neighborhood model principles. But we don't want to, obviously we don't want to crowd the land. We've left room for the multi-use path and other things. Does that address your question?
Well, it clarifies that we don't have a, a setback to really understand or, or even evaluate this step back requirement at this point. There's, there's, I wasn't, my question was, I wanted to make sure that I didn't miss it. It doesn't exist right now. There, there is no.
But we can certainly add it. I believe the, perhaps Ms. Ragsdale could clarify, but I believe the R15 front yard setback would apply at least to the buildings, right? The building still had to be five feet from the property line at a minimum.
So that's where in this situation, you know, the, the narrative requests for the step backs said generous setback from Ivy Road. So, you know, putting the zoning hat on when we get to site plan, you know, is, is it, you know, is it 20 feet from, from Old Ivy edge of right away? These are things that we think are important to establish for enforceability later on. You know, I said in the staff report that based on what I could see from the illustrative, that there was those, you know, it may not be, I, I, we talked a lot about the, the vehicular travel way, which is technically not a street. But in my mind, it should, it's functioning like a street and we should establish setbacks from it. So there may be places where I felt, I thought it was appropriate to establish a front setback where technically one wouldn't apply. Just based on some ordinance definitions, but when you look at it, and you know, I picked this up from a planner that's on vacation, but you know, the step, I don't know the timing of these things. But we've also had some other special exception requests that y'all have reviewed more recently that weren't at the beginning of this, you know, review for this rezoning. So I'm not sure what, what the right number is from Old Ivy. I just wanted to point out that the maximum setback is 25 feet in the ordinance. So if that's going to be a problem, then we need to address that. But it sounds like I just don't know what that number is. And I think that that specificity would be very helpful to everyone as the project moves forward.
Sure. And I think with the update, we could certainly at a minimum indicate it a measurement, the distance from the property line to the edge of the building envelope and make sure that it's within that five to say 25 feet distance. If, if that would help and that would at least make it easier, as Ms. Ragsdale said at the site plan stage, to confirm in reviewing the site plan that it does comply with those setbacks.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Just a quick question. Is the multi-use path running in front to, as along there as well or not?
Yes, yes.
So there would be some distance for that, whatever that width would be eight to 10 feet.
Correct.
And then some distance between that and the building and then some distance between the path and the road.
Exactly. And that's indicated, it's a little hard to see, but it is indicated. As you can see, hopefully there is space between the, yeah, we do have zoomed in, bear with us and we'll get to that precise page. That probably shows it at least right there. As you can see, there's white space between the blue multi-use path and the tan building envelope.
Right. I just wanted to point out that that, that can kind of mentally put that into your calculation. But it's hard to see when we're all zoomed in, we don't have a scale. Anyway.
Thank you. We can certainly add those measurements. It's a, again, we, we hadn't realized that was a concern and we would have done that early on and we're happy to do that.
I think it, it always is when you're asking for a step back.
Sure, it makes sense.
Exception, because we have granted those. But in the ones that we've granted recently, they've been in a case where the building was far back from the road. So it wasn't impinging on anybody's feeling of the cavern effect that was referenced earlier. All right. Finally, Mr. Vivins.
No, so I just, I just have sort of, I have just a few sort of clarification. If we can go back to, if we can go back to the, to the image that had the concept of the, the concept one.
Sure.
Of the layout of the, of the properties, not this one. But it was more sort of, you, you got a, you have that one, so that's fine. I don't know what that illustrative plan. So can you just sort of give, give us a sense of what are the amenities that would be useful all year round?
Sure. So we have two clubhouses, kind of right. And sorry, you can't see my cursor. They're right next to the pools. We usually put clubhouse. There's one kind of near the single family and duplexes as well as one near the apartment buildings. So those would be all year round. We also have sports courts, which while outside, we, we would expect that people would use them for the vast majority of time.
Is that the area that's noted here as recreation area?
Yes.
There's, if you underneath this label, there's a tennis courts or something.
Yes, maybe I'll just zoom in here. So there's, there's one here or two here, two. And then there's two over here as well. We also plan on having a dog run. We haven't illustrated that exactly on the plan as we're still trying to figure out where those would be. Other amenities that we have, obviously the open space and, and the ability, we're adding actually more trails. Other than the Rivana Trail, we're adding more trails around.
I'm, I'm good. You've answered that question. Can, can you speak to them? There were a couple of punchouts there. So there's one that looks like it's between, let's say not at six o'clock, but maybe if we go from six, from, from single family over to the left. And then there's the one that's sort of single family Florida. There's no, there's no politics in it. It just looks. So the single family Florida down there. Just, you know, from my eyes, it looks like it's Florida. So what's the purpose and when is that going to happen and what will that do? What's the purpose of that, please?
Sure, that these bump outs right here and then over to the left, I believe. Yes. So this is a pedestrian and bike path. There's an easement that kind of runs around the site. We plan on building out that pedestrian and bike path on this side. We also, and let me go back to your other, yeah.
Yeah, it's just not showing up on there for some reason.
I do this. Laser pointer. Ah, there we go.
There we go.
Okay, sorry about that guy. So this is the one pedestrian path, biking pedestrian path. That brings you around the site and we're trying to work on finalizing and, and coming to an agreement to eventually connect that to Leonard Sandridge. Or a, a development that will, that does have a future path to Leonard Sandridge. And I can, we have another slide that kind of shows. He, here's kind of that easement and this is kind of that back part that you were talking about. And eventually ideally we connect it here. There's a future development that has a kind of path or a connection all the way to Leonard Sandridge. And then the other one that you referenced was in this area. And this is a future interconnection point. We've, we've been talking with our neighbors on connecting with them. We're still in conversations. But i- if there is a, it, it allows us the ability to at any time, if they would like to connect, that we already have that connection point so that they can meet us.
So, so, so the other, the, the other thing that I, I was trying to get a, a figure, so while I know other people have sort of feelings about parking, but it seems like your parking and, and I'm not necessarily saying that I think the parking should be reduced, even though I know that probably runs counter to some of my colleagues up here. And the reason I say that is because you use, for example, Charlotte and Raleigh, which while I'd like to think we were like Charlotte, I, you know, we have the ville after us, which sort of makes it a smaller Charlotte. And, and while I, and while I might go that we look like Raleigh, the triangle we, that we sit in is not the research triangle.
Yes.
So, you know, I wanted to sort of be clear about this. So, so using those places to say what kind of public transportation this, this piece of property would have access to gave me some pause. Because A, I don't believe we're going to get that transit up there, having been part of a decades worth of discussions about getting transit from either UTS and now some conversations with CAT about what they're going to do. So unless your app, unless you're, 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 unless the project is going to buy a CAT stop, which is possible, it's expensive, but it is possible. That's not going to happen anytime soon. So just, so just, you know, so, so I should just sort of declare that I don't, I, I didn't buy your parking reductions. I should just sort of be, be upfront about that.
Yep. So I think that your comment about Charlotte and Raleigh is, is well received. I think what we should have done is kind of show a map of where those projects actually are. Because we had said there in Charlotte and Raleigh as kind of that is the. Because uh we had said there in Charlotte and Raleigh as kind of that is the closest city. But in actuality, these are projects that are significantly farther out um that are suburban projects, very similar type of apartment projects to this. Um, and actually that they're not as close to, you know, the bus stop that's currently in front of North Grounds or other areas. Um, kind of as close to the amenities as this would be. So that that we want to give a general area of where they were and and they are not in downtown Charlotte or kind of.
What I might suggest to you is if you're going to carry that that analysis through, that you look at Ivy Gardens, you look at Huntington Village and ask how many of your vehicles are actually there during the day.
Yes.
Cause that that would then give, that would then give you sort of a a um a way to speak about what the locals sort of use of 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 those of of vehicles in that particular road are. So let me just go to something else then. So do you have just a ballpark? I am not going to, so anyone who's writing this down, this is just so that I have an idea. What's the rent going to be in this project?
So the rents, depending on the units, we have a large variety of different units. Um, anywhere from eighteen fifty uh all the way up to thirty six.
Okay.
So that's that's kind of our estimate.
Okay.
We've, we've been told we'll get a lot more. We've been told otherwise as well.
Probably whatever happens in the next, you know, sort of rate hike or not rate hike, that'll depend on how much you're going to get. So was it, so all I wanted to just sort of get a point that that's not an inexpensive rent point, rental point. So that's all I wanted to say. So here's the piece that really, unlike my, unlike my colleague, here's the piece that really makes me um annoyed. So we have Mr. Clarkson here who did this wonderful thing about talking about how he wanted to be part of the community, how he wanted to sort of make sure that this was a, this was a project that that in fact stood on its, that sort of was embraced by the community. And then you tell us that you're really going to stick to the fourteen affordable units. Now, let's all be really clear. Affordable units is not about poverty. Affordable units is about paying up jobs. And because of our community morphing towards more of a service industry, those jobs don't pay as much as some of the other jobs used to be. So it's not about poverty. It's about, do I have a job that pays me this amount of money? And so I think it would be really, if this goes forward, when it goes forward, it would really be a strong signal that I really want to be responsive to the community if I'm not saying I won't give you fourteen units. And so y'all go, you don't have to respond to that. I'm just, I'm just gonna just say, as you go forward, you might want to have those internal conversations.
No, and and we to we totally understand and and understand the eighteen to thirty six um hundred dollars is not the 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 cheapest rent.
Well, oh, and I'm, I'm, so you need to hear from me. I'm not giving you a hard time about the rent. I think that, yeah, I'm not, that's not what I'm here doing. What I'm saying is that if you signal to me that you want to be embraced by this community, then I say, okay, that's a reasonable rent. I get that rent. I get these amenities. That seems like a reasonable set of amenities. I've still have severe concern about the nineteen eighty five proffer, so I should just say that. But then I have even, that then even pushes me a little farther. And your your counsel will know that because she's heard me talk about these be these things before, that being able to have people who want to work here and want to live here is very important. And so when you talk about, when, when, when people talk about the largest employer, at the same time, I would advise you to go to the HR, to UVA HR website and see what the salary range is. The people who are doing this are probably uh, I won't say full professors, but they're probably people who are not going to med school. The people who are probably not going to law school, having been one of those individuals. And they're not probably people from some of your colleagues, your Darden colleagues, they probably stayed at Ivy Gardens, but that's okay. That's a big, that's a law school Ivy Gardens kind of thing. Garden competition there, we can get into that on at another time, where where you live when you're in those two schools. But what I'm saying is that these aren't going to be the more modest roles among us who are going to be living there. This is going to be people who just make decisions like I'm getting close to that. I don't want a big house with a lot of property anymore. I want to live some place that somebody's going to take care of my, all that foolishness for me. If you're going to do that, then let's also think about what that community looks like and how you invite others in. And so that's all, that's what I'm saying to you here, that I have a hard time balancing some of this, given the wonderful set of words that that your managing partner sort of shared with us. And I may come back later, but that you got enough out of me right there, Joe.
All right, thank you. So I think um unless the commissioner has any more questions at this point. Um, we, we do want to get to the public hearing in respect for our audience who've been waiting uh kind of a long time. So if you can be brief.
Yeah, just some of the, some of the community that provided comments to us, um, talked about their concerns with stormwater. And as noted, there are significant issues with flooding on that road. Um, this will add a a lot more, a lot more pavement, um, a lot more impervious surface to this area. And and so I was wondering, I know this is conceptual, but do you have an idea about how much um, how much stormwater you anticipate treating on site?
What I can speak to there, I can't speak to specifics. Obviously, there's a lot of variables that play into that, but what I can say is that.
Could you move the mic down? It's, it was have to adjust them.
Sure. So I can't speak to specifics there. We're still in conceptual. There's a lot of variables that play into that. But what I can say is that the project will be in full compliance with the stormwater codes of the state and the county.
Yeah, they're not usually required to provide their stormwater management details at this point. However, some developers do say, we're planning to do more progressive things on our site, such as permeable pavement or other, you know, other BMPs that they may decide to offer.
I I just mentioned it since they had suggested that they were providing um environmentally sensitive design.
Right. It's a fair ques- it's fi- it's fine to ask now. Just letting you know, we don't usually get it at this stage.
Yeah.
I often ask that. Okay. All right, thank you. So commissioners, we will have more chance to talk. Um, and the applicant will also have another chance to come back up after we hold the public hearing and let the the public uh who signed up to speak, speak. So with that, I'm going to move us on to uh the public contribution of this hearing. And I want to just give you a few rules of the pool before we uh go forward. Uh, we try to conduct ourselves in a very civil manner. And so we ask that people not cheer, shout, throw things, boo, hiss, uh whatever. If you're in uh support of something, it's fine. One thing we found works really well is to raise your hand. And so then, you know, we can see that, yes, you agree with the speaker who just spoke. Uh, the other, you can put your thumbs down if you want, uh if you like, but um we just asked for no loud outbursts. You'll each have three minutes to make your comments. You'll see a green light come on. That's your cue that it's time to go. Uh, yellow will come on when you're getting cautiously close to the end and red means stop. Um, so if you, if you feel like you're speaking slowly and you're not getting your points, just cut to the chase and give us the most important thing you want to say. It's also fine to say ditto if you agree with the person who just spoke before you and then you want to make a different or new point. Uh, so with that, um, we have twenty people signed up to speak so far. If you did not sign up to speak, that's fine. Um, we will give you a chance to come forward and off your comments as well. So there, there is not a limit on how many people may speak this evening. What I like to do also to speed this along is I call the first three people and ask you to queue up. Um, that way we won't have to wait as each person gets up out of their seat. So I'm going to call the first three and you'll be speaking in this order. If I butcher your name, apologies in advance. The first person is Joe, Joel Loving. Then we have Robert Whaley and then Donna Deloria. So if we can have you three, beginning with Mr. Loving. And also, I know I just called your name, but please state your name into the microphone so she gets it on the recording.
Sure, no problem. It's Joel Loving and uh my family and I live at seventeen Deer Path in the Bel Air neighborhood across two fifty from uh this proposed development. Uh, first of all, let me say we're grateful that representatives of Gray Star met with us or several of us from this neighborhood uh to last week to discuss their proposal. Uh, the session was extremely informative. It was forthcoming and appeared from the answers to the questions that we had at this meeting, however, that and as you probably have understood as well, there were a lot of issues regarding the proposed development that had not been settled or even formally discussed. Uh, with entities such as VDOT, uh the CSX Railroad, the County of Albemarle, University of Virginia. Just doesn't sound like there's been much communication with the entities that really need to be involved with this. And it's no question that adding as many as fifteen hundred residents and a thousand vehicles to this small area will have a substantial impact on pedestrian and vehi- vehicular traffic, uh stormwater, uh the local school system, and I'm sure there's plenty more that will be discussed this evening than I'm not even aware of or have thought of. But as a frequent traveler on Old Ivy Road, typically multiple times a day, I just wanted to briefly address the traffic issues which I'm most familiar. I think it's been discussed ad nauseam already tonight, so I won't go through all my details and save you one minute. But as it currently exists, the Old Ivy Road is no theraphair. It's a twisty hilly. Uh, at least on the east side, it's narrow, it's overcrowded, particularly for pedestrians and bicyclists. It's it's extremely dangerous. Uh, let's just say it's not ready for prime time and I won't go through the rest of my details here. Um, now, in the meeting with Gray Star, we were told that none of these traffic issues had been addressed with VDOT or the University of Virginia, only that they had offered uh five hundred thousand dollars to help traffic congestion problems. I think we can safely conclude that even ten times that amount is not going to help Old Ivy Road. Uh, but I'd like to bring up one thing, and that's UVA's necessary involvement, and that's for two reasons. Uh, Leonard Sandridge Road and North Grounds. Don't think any of that has been discussed yet. As we understand from Gray Star's representatives, they believe this apartment and townhome complex will primarily house UVA grad students. Lisa, that's what they say. While we're not convinced of this, um, if it were, then the most logical primary access and main entrance to this property would of course be over in the northeast end of the site from Leonard Sandridge Road. Uh, we were told by Gray Star that they had asked for a meeting with the university officials to talk about this possibility, but UVA had chosen not to respond. Uh, if there's no logical way to make Ivy, Old Ivy Road work with this community and UVA is obviously not on board with access to Leonard Sandridge Road, I believe the proposal has a long way to go and needs to go way back to the drawing. That's all I say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Robert Whaley, thank you.
Hi. Hi, my name is Robert Whaley. I live on Canterbury Road in Bel Air. The only traffic entrance to Bel Air is off Ivy Road at the Bel Air Market Exxon. This is the same intersection with one of the railroad underpasses off Old Ivy Road, the Western Underpants. Maury Creek also runs through Bel Air. The proposed Gray Star development is in the watershed of Maury Creek upstream of Bel Air. I want the county to hold to the nineteen eighty five proffer. The road should be substantially improved before any more buildings are added. I think three things specifically need to be done. The Old Ivy Eastern Road underpass needs to be widened and a safe pedestrian route added. Two, the Old Ivy Western Railroad underpass needs to be widened and improved. And three, the horrible cloverleaf from eastbound Ivy Road to northbound bypass needs to be fixed. The problem is that the cloverleaf merge lane is far too short. Most people avoid this scary cloverleaf by turning left from Ivy Road at the Bel Air intersection, going under the railroad underpass and then turning right onto Old Ivy Road to use that ramp to the bypass instead of the cloverleaf. This impedes traffic on Ivy Road. A proper cloverleaf would be much more efficient for both Ivy Road and Old Ivy Road. The other thing that worries me is stormwater. In the twenty-three years I have lived in Bel Air, things have been getting progressively worse for us in Bel Air with regards to Maury Creek overflowing. This increase of flooding coincides with much new development on Old Ivy Road. The Gray Star project would change their, the the land from grass and forest that absorb lots of rain to parking spaces and roofs that absorb none of it. Will their plans to mitigate stormwater runoff actually work? No one will really know for sure until a hurricane or bad thunderstorm comes through during or after construction. Gray Star is trying to claim that this student is student housing and these students will have very few school-aged children and will rarely drive. Instead, they will walk to class and shopping. This claim might help Gray Star get the product, project approved, but is it really so? Also, once complete, a manager or rental agent for a property like Gray Star with a mixture of townhomes, detached houses and apartments would rather have older tenants who will be more responsible and stay longer than students. Regardless of what students do, the older tenants will drive to work and will have kids enrolled in county schools. I hope that the county will make sure that the roads are fixed prior to building this development. Also, I hope the county will carefully review the stormwater plans to assure that folks downstream are not adversely affected during construction and afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker is Don Deloria.
Um, I'm Donna Deloria with the law firm of Payne and Hodes, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Filthy Beast LLC and Father Goose LLC. They're the owners of parcels twenty-four C, twenty-four C one, twenty-four C three and twenty-four C four, which are part of the of the application. Um, I'm also speaking on behalf of their owner, whose home has been in Huntington Village for more than forty-five years. Th- this property is neighbor to Ivy Gardens, which is a hundred percent rental apartments, Huntington Village condominium, which averages about sixty-five percent rentals, and University Village condominium. Uh, the popularity of this location for people to live because it's close and convenient and right by the university and right by everything that the city of Charlottesville has to offer is is well-known. Um, the the county has deemed this property appropriate for development at urban density since at least nineteen eighty-five, just like Ivy Gardens, University Village and Huntington Village. However, in the early nineteen nineties, this property came under the shadow of the proposed Western Bypass. And it was not until twenty twenty that the final parcel was able to be reacquired from VDOT. Gray Star's commitment to understanding and responding to the site and the community uh is demonstrated by several things. And first came to our attention when we learned that they would only seek a hundred and twenty-five units, which is far less than has been suggested by other developers. They also, on their own motion, uh determined that they would place multi-story apartments only at the lower elevations and two-story structures in the higher elevations. They didn't wait for anybody to complain or ask for that. They did it because in their assessment, it would accommodate concerns about views from University Village and the entrance corridor and still allow them to develop a desirable community. Um, and in fact, that community will be a unique mix of apartments and single-family housing that's purpose-built for rental. It'll have the flexibility to meet changing housing, housing needs over many years. Student, retiree, whatever the community needs as time goes by. It has the potential to serve as a model for future communities. They've developed it as a flagship. And uh we, they also have worked not only actively to pursue transportation, pedestrian, bicycle improvements that are within a private developer's limited ability to impact. But they have also worked to connect those at the county, VDOT and the university who have much greater ability to affect change. They haven't said, the railroad bridge is out of our control. We're not going to talk about it. They've put people in touch. They've talked to the university. They have done many things and they continue to urge and to push that. And these are the actions of a responsible developer which is committed to its community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next three people to speak are Liz Kuchai, Ellen Robertson, Lisa McDermott.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Kuchai. For forty-eight years, I've lived in the city near UVA. For four forty-six years, I lived in the city. Not quite three years ago, I moved less than a mile to University Village and now find myself in the Jack Jewett District in the county. So in more than forty-eight years, I've seen a lot of new buildings erected by private developers and by UVA. I'm very concerned about Gray Star's proposal to build five hundred twenty-five dwelling units on raw land funding on Old Ivy Road. This is way too many for the already crowded road. The University of Virginia has already erected many new buildings on Old Ivy Road. They also own Ivy Gardens Apartments and have plans to redevelop that property, increasing its density by a hundred and fifty percent. That was a little fact that they tucked in one corner of one PowerPoint slide when they came and talked to us. Uh, the university has already announced plans to add Darden graduate housing on the Ivy Gardens site to the tune of four hundred forty beds. Um, they don't have to ask your permission to do this. They're exempt from any zoning controls and the little road that we all use, it will carry even more traffic as a result. Gray Star says they want to max out R fifteen zoning with five hundred and twenty-five units. The only reason I can imagine they want such high density and the problems it will bring. is to make a profit after paying too much for the land. 14 of these will be affordable? To me, this is the dictionary definition of chutzpah. My long experience of living in this community and attending many meetings of city and county planners has taught me two things. One, the university can and will do whatever it likes. And two, private developers will relentlessly pursue their goal to get the highest possible density for their projects at the least possible cost to them. Over and over, I've seen local governments cave in to pressure from developers who overpromise and underdeliver. I am begging you not to cave in this time.
Thank you. All right, Ellen Roberts.
Good evening, thank you for this opportunity to present this. I'm Ellen Roberts, a resident of University Village. The recognition of a traffic problem on Old Ivy goes way back and is fundamental to tonight's decision. Gray Star asks the commission to recommend overturning the 1985 road proffer that limits residential density about along Old Ivy. To do so, the Board of Supervisors must find that the traffic problem has improved to their satisfaction. Satisfaction is hard to define, but improvement can be studied. Gray Star had submitted a document that claims extensive and significant improvement of Old Ivy Road with 27 improvements since 1985, but the evidence of improvement is questionable at best. Their photographers' photographs go across time and do show that the development on and near Old Ivy has been extensive, including numerous housing additions and office buildings. On the traffic problem side, that corresponds with available traffic volume information. Traffic counts in 1984 were 4,011 trips per day, and in 2019, it has jumped to 8,300 trips per day. Clearly, by imaging counts, traffic is far worse, more than doubled than it was three years ago. We can only guess what this actually is today. Their figure of 4,326 from Gray Star is more than questionable. What about improvement claimed by Gray Star? A careful look at the location mapping and associated photos in the Old Ivy Improvements document shows the following. First, six photos are entries to developments. They prove that development happened. They show that nothing that represents traffic improvement. Second, 14 of the claims are of deceleration or acceleration lanes, sometimes with sidewalks. One could say these shows, these shows, show ways that make traffic less worse, but not improvement. Third, two are away from Old Ivy. Fourth and finally, five probably represent improvements, but they pale in sufficence, insignificance, compared to the 4,289 trips per day increase in vehicles. Added burden clearly outpaced improvement, and Old Ivy now has unquestionably worse traffic than in 1985. Greater traffic volumes, but this, greater traffic volume matters. But this problem also involves additional safety and emergency access concerns caused by the railroad underpasses that more or less trap Ivy Road. This worries me greatly for myself, my neighbors, and any future travelers along Old Ivy Road. For all of us, I ask the commission to reject the claim of significant improvement and to sustain the 1985 proffer limiting higher destiny. Traffic growth on Old Ivy Road will only grow exponentially with the addition of the Emmett and Ivy Corridor. The additional danger to both travelers and emergency vehicles should be avoided at all costs. Thank you very much, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you. All right, unless I've gotten off, it's Lisa McDermott. Yes, thanks.
Hello. My name is Lisa McDermott, and I'm a resident at University Village since 2016. I'm an internal medicine physician, and I work at several nursing homes in addition to occasional shifts at Centerra Martha Jefferson Hospital. My concern is the inadequacy of roads and infrastructure around Old Ivy Road. As I still travel to work on a daily basis, I'm concerned about increased traffic in the area. I feel strongly that there needs to be significant improvement in the infrastructure as both vehicular and pedestrian traffic increases in the area. I do try to avoid high-traffic times, but cannot always do so. My biggest concerns are, number one, the buildup of traffic on 250, 29 southbound exiting to Old Ivy Road. High-traffic times include both when St. Anne Bellfield School lets out and in the, in the afternoon and at rush hour. Traffic often backs up onto the highway and shoulder. This creates quite a dangerous situation as cars frequently have to slam on the brakes due to unexpected early exiting. In addition, there's a law enforcement officer who must direct traffic when the school lets out, which does not seem a great use of resources. My second concern is the railroad bridge at the east end of Old Ivy Road. It is quite narrow, only letting one car go through at a time. Cars coming from both directions must navigate this. What is most concerning is that there's also pedestrian traffic, including walkers, bikers, and people on scooters. Since there's no path or sidewalk, they must also use this narrow road along with cars. This is extremely hazardous at night because there's no lighting in this area. The concrete wall itself now seems to be crumbling, and it just seems a hazard all around. I know there was a traffic study that shows significant problems on Old Ivy Road. My own experience shows this every day. I can tell you, as a commuter, as a doctor, and as a resident in this area, I get very concerned about young people walking, plus commuters, plus children's parents trying to navigate the same underpass. In addition, morningside assisted living is also uncrossed for drive and frequently requires EMS, as do some residents at University Village. EMS having to negotiate the same challenges slows the response and puts lives at risk. I hope you will consider upgrades to the infrastructure in this area before approving a substantial increase in additional housing units. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, the next three people we have signed up to speak is Betty Natoli, Frank Weincoff, and Deborah Shat- Shatton, S-H-A-T-I-N. Or, maybe that's the spelling. And also, feel free to move that mic up and down, it's not friendly.
It has to come down for me.
Yes.
Thank you. Betty Natoli, I'm a resident of University Village and a really concerned citizen about the size of the proposed community, not the fact that it's there, but the size of it. It's right to the west of University Village. And the walking, the biking, and driving conditions on Old Ivy Road, consider, they are a real serious threat. According to the recent traffic impact, when complete, the proposed development will generate a total of 4,000, as had been said before, 4,326 average daily trips. The safety of drivers and walkers on Old Ivy Road will be challenged, say the least. Old Ivy Road has problems at both ends. On the east, by the mirrors of the Stowe Railway Bridge, which is a safety hazard to both walkers and drivers. To the west on Old Ivy Road is the 29-250 Bridge. An important part of Gray Star's claim of improvement of Old Ivy Road to safe pedestrian passage is the upgrading of the bridge that takes Old Ivy Road across 29. In the initial application for Ivy residences and in its revisions, Gray Star claims in a most recent version that the upgrade is already funded and planned and will include a four-foot-wide expansion to accommodate pedestrians and bikers. A VDOT representative confirmed just this Friday, June 10th. This is not true. There is no pedestrian improvement included with this rebuild. The proposed width of the 601 Bridge, state structure 6261 that crosses 250, is 26 feet, seven inches rail-to-rail. Work will be done on the substructure to provide a minimum over 250, and a new superstructure will be installed over the minimally modified abutments at piers. This is a bridge repair and not a replacement. Going back to the proffer of 85, which states that without serious improvements to the 29-250 Bridge, development of the road would not be feasible, and certainly not of this size development. Clearly, the proffer has not been satisfied. As to the improvements of Old Ivy Road, we still have spotty, non-connecting sidewalks, no bike-and-walking paths. How can we handle an additional 4,326 average daily trips without creating a serious community problem? These are not just words or statistics, but I live there, and I drive Old Ivy Road almost every day. And I fear that our community's safety, our community being University Village and all the people surrounding, is in jeopardy. Please be aware of these problems, because I am, and I am a citizen of Alamo. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes. Okay, and next speaker is Frank Weincoff.
Good evening. My name is Frank Weincoff. My wife and I live at University Village. And let me preface my remarks by saying I'm not anti-development, especially not anti-student development, but I'm opposed to the development of this proposed size, which threatens the safety of our neighborhoods and our surrounding neighborhoods. At, on a two-lane road with limited access, no minimum sidewalks, no crosswalks, and no stoplights. My wife, at age 92, regularly walks on Old Ivy Road, crossing the road twice on her two-mile route, dodging sometimes fast-moving traffic along with bikers, cyclists, scooters, cars, and other walkers. Safety is a concern. And as we talked, Old Ivy Road is not just a housing destination. Virginia, University of Virginia has a big presence here with offices and warehouses. Also, private office buildings and a very prominent restaurant on Old Ivy Road, as well as access to highways 250 and 29. Pedestrian safety at eastern entrance exit to Old Ivy Road is of a particular concern. As cars and trucks take turns going through this one-way railroad tunnel, I have personally seen walkers, joggers, and mothers with baby carriages take their lives in their hands going through that tunnel, dodging traffic from commuters, moving vans, service vehicles, emergency vehicles, shoppers, and so forth. Pedestrians have no chance. Safety is a concern. Now, add the prospect of a large number of construction vehicles, and eventually some 500 personal vehicles, and Old Ivy Road is not only scary, but maybe deadly. With any of these concerns for safety, without road improvements and/or upgrades, any recommendations for a project of this magnitude may not be a prudent decision at this time. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. All right. Deborah Shatton. And please correct the name pronunciation.
Hello, I'm Deborah Shatton, and a resident of University Village. I'll focus on my experiences and observations as a driver on Old Ivy Road. Driving Old Ivy Road includes many problems, and one of the most critical is ensuring the safety of pedestrians and bikers while driving, while there are cars. Bikers, walkers, runners are often on the road itself, sometimes against traffic on the north side of Old Ivy. While most drivers proceed carefully, some do not slow down, many swing into the other lane. This is even more dangerous when bikers or pedestrians enter the narrow passage under the railroad bridge on the east end of Old Ivy. I slow down or stop until they clear the passage. Some drivers do not. It is complicated even more when walkers are there at night or on their cellphones. Unfortunately, there is no other route for residents of the Old Ivy area to reach the stores on Ivy Road. Because of this, I'm very concerned about any changes that will increase the number of non-drivers, and I'm interested in proposals that might make Old Ivy safer and more accessible. The proposed multi-use path on the north side of Old Ivy would be helpful, but for two problems. One is the narrow deceleration lane, steep hillside, and retaining walls that make passage along University, pardon me, Huntington Village difficult, if not impossible. The second is that even with a successful path along the north side, pedestrians, runners, bikers would still be unable to reach destinations along Ivy Road without going through the dangerous railroad underpasses. The condition of Old Ivy's road is also a danger to drivers. This is especially true in navigating the narrow passage under the railroad at the east end. Like me, many drivers yield and take turns to facilitate safe movement. Others do not. And at times, opposing vehicles and pedestrians are all present at the same time. I wish there were an easy solution. If full development happens, more walkers, runners, bikers, scooters, you've heard others, are expected, as well as vastly more vehicles. The difficulties and dangers will only increase. It is my hope that reasonable decision-makers will push hard for effective solutions before letting the problem get even worse. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. All right, the next three people we have scheduled to speak are Lyle Hollowell, Dan Levering, and Betty Dinwiddie. Go ahead.
Good evening, I'm Lyle Hollowell, resident of University Village. I'll concentrate on Old Ivy Road traffic problem concerns, which you've heard a lot about already, but I'm going to focus on the traffic impact analysis. It shows many traffic problems despite the limitations of its methodology. Those limitations relate especially to current usage sampling that was restricted to counts at five intersections for only two two-hour periods on a single Thursday, May 6, 2021, during the COVID pandemic. The resulting undercount is acknowledged and corrected for volume by adding 10%, but that does not correct for traffic pattern differences. Current traffic load is relevant and used for the future modeling, but is less important than the prediction of traffic problems after Old Ivy residences is fully occupied. Accordingly, the Old Ivy residences' application, the proffer of 111521, planning staff review comments reference a 6% or 6.5% figure as the added traffic burden, and the planning staff report before you concludes that traffic will be exacerbated, quote, "by a small amount," end of quote. This seemingly small amount is calculated by taking the projected count of Old Ivy residences' traffic in the worst hour only, specifically 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., and dividing by the projected total traffic count, both produced by modeling. The worst hour total is further limited by including only three intersections and not all possible directional movements, so that a full count is not used in the calculation. The 6.5% is a measure future traffic load is problematic. The worst hour effect matters, but so do others. Traffic impact analysis modeling calculates an expected daily traffic contribution of 4,326 trips per day. The 2019 pre-pandemic Old Ivy Road count by VDOT is 8,300 trips per day. With the two combined, we get 12,626 trips per day. This means that Old Ivy residences will account for a 52% increase in traffic volume and will represent 34.2% of all traffic on Old Ivy at that time. These numbers suggest a large amount, not a small one. Old Ivy will be significantly more traveled and is already beyond what in 1985 was said to be an intolerable traffic level of 7,500, declared by one of the VDOT reps at that time. The planning staff have repeatedly acknowledged traffic problems in the review of the initial and revised applications. It is now up to you as commissioners to respond, and at the very least, not make a bad problem worse. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Daniel Levering, I live at University Village, and I've lived there since 2004. I am one of the few residents that's actually employed full-time, and I'm a librarian at the JAG School, which is on the other side of the law school. I'm very familiar with this area, having worked there and hiked around the area for years before North Grounds Connector and Leonard Sandridge Road. I'm here to request you to deny this project because of the lack of fire and emergency access. The term of art is fire apparatus access roads. And they, Gray Star has a couple of places on their diagram, but I'm not satisfied that they meet two standard codes, and those two codes are the International Fire Code and the National Fire Protection Administration or Organization Code. And they both have very detailed requirements for fire and access, access to big developments over 200 units. And what I'm going to suggest- And what I'm going to suggest is that you turn this back to Gray Star and have them set out in detail how their two access roads that they show on the diagram that you have seen meet both of these codes. That's, we're talking about a very serious situation here. You've seen the size of this development amassing. It is gigantic. It's just mind-boggling. And the problem with this is, we have an excellent fire department here in Albemarle County. We've run out the University Village several times. We actually had a fire there a few years ago, and they came out and took care of it. But no fire department, no matter how good they are, is going to be able to cope with a fire in a development of this size when you got people packed in there like sardines. It's going to take them a while to get there, and then if people are fleeing out, they're not going to be able to get in as quick as they would like. I'll give you a good example. In Overland Park, Kansas, in 2017, there was a similar fire, got completely out of control. An eight-alarm fire, 53 fire engines, hundreds, hundreds of firefighters, and they couldn't contain it. And that's going to be the problem here. So may Gray Star go back and show how their two access roads satisfies these codes. I thank you very much for my, for hearing me out.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Benny, Betty Dinwiddie. Sorry.
Hi, everybody. I'm Beggin' Witty. I am also a resident at University Village and have been for 15 years. This is my husband's and my second tour in Albemarle County, so we are happily familiar with it. I was glad to get home when we came back in 2007. I do not have a developer's mentality. I do not see a piece of open land, green space, as a place to build something. I lament the sacrifice, the destruction of our ever diminishing green spaces. They cannot be replaced. We aren't growing any more of them. Development depletes air quality, water availability. It increases trash and human waste. The Ravanna Trail system goes through this land pleasantly at present, and I know that the trail folks have accepted the promise of the developer. The fact that this piece of green is part of the view shed of some University Village residents and the drivers along the bypass, I might add, that is a consideration. The fact that some of us at University Village enjoy a nature trail in the woods adjoining the land under consideration is under threat. The air and sound pollution associated with the developing is to be dreaded. Old Ivy Road, as has been noted by practically everybody, can barely handle the traffic it already carries, and there appears to be no viable solution to that. Add to that, construction vehicles first, and with more potential resident vehicles to follow. Again, for me, the worst violation, as I see it, is the permanent loss of a green area in this part of the community in Albemarle County. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, the next three people we'll have to speak will be Bill Sherman, Hillary Strubel, and Peter Reitmeyer.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Oh, excuse me. Yeah, I guess that's the correct salutation, members. I'm Bill Sherman, a resident of University Village, an age-restricted condominium. I'm on our board of directors. Amusing to me is that at age 95, I chair a long-range planning that's planning five years out and beyond my expiration date. In those roles, I thought we could resolve our concerns with Gray Star's development in a friendly, neighborly way. In 2021, we tried. Years in, Gray Star gave us a flat no. Gray Star's emphatic no continues. Its response to my ask, "Please keep the natural woodlands in the northeast corner of the project, undeveloped." For the record, the, this evening, my clients were born and have spent their entire lives in Albemarle County. I serve them pro bono. They're the nature, the mature trees and other woodland creatures whose lives are at risk by your decision. They're residents of a 1.6-acre part of parcel 6024C1, unknown to those. Their home place is Zernd R10, and at risk of being replaced by human-dwelling units. In a recent report on the UVA project to provide 440 housing units in Ivy Gardens for graduate students at Darden, Grace, uh, Grace's plans for likely competing grad student housing has the potential of offering forested hills to west, north, and east. Sadly, Gray Star's concept plan envisions a serious break in those forested hills. Those 1.6 acres now hold a mature stand of oaks and other valued trees. If left natural, on the order of 20 continuous acres, a mature forest would wrap around the project. In Gray Star's May 16 narrative, under impacts of environmental features, the project says and reads, "The project is designed to conserve the existing forested areas as much as possible. Specifically, the development layout focuses on utilizing spaces to minimize the disturbance to the surrounding forested area." The plan, excuse me, let me just conclude by thanking you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Hillary Strubel, and I'm currently the Director of Resident Relations at University Village, located here in Albemarle County. I've worked in this community for the last 20 years. It has become my home away from home, and the residents that live there, my extended family. I'm here this evening to express my concerns about the potential problems resulting from the proposed Gray Star sewage lift station. The Virginia Administrative Code 25-790-380, Article 2 on Sewage Pump Stations, begins, "Sewage pump stations should be located as far as practical from present or proposed built-up residential areas, and an all-weather road shall be provided. Stations should have a proper zone of controlled or limited use surrounding them. Within such zones, residential uses or high-density human activities should be prevented." The Old Ivy Residence's proposed sewage lift station is located on their plan in a small section of green space right between two of their proposed apartment buildings, as well as a set of townhomes. Not only is this directly next to residential area, but there's no indication of an all-weather access so that this lift station can be properly maintained. Sewage lift stations containing pumps, valves, and electrical equipment are basically a giant collection of moving parts that need continuous maintenance and repair. Broken or damaged lift stations can result in a variety of negative situations, ranging from unpleasant smells, standing water, to serious health violations. Not only could this be an issue for future residents of Old Ivy residences, but our six-story residential building is located directly downwind of the vent pipe for proposed sewage lift station. This means that when the lift station fails, as they inevitably do, the noxious odors will affect all of our 120 residents as well. And I may be known at University Village as the person who can find a solution to any problem, but this one might be too big for me to solve. I asked the planning commission to consider limits of what, an R10, as opposed to an R15 across the land parcel. That would limit the number of proposed residences to 350, with only 350 homes. The possibility exists for a gravity-fed system that would eliminate, eliminate these environmental issues for all of the current and future residences, residents of Old Ivy Road. Thank you so much for your time.
My name is Peter Reitmeyer, and I'm the Executive Director at University Village. During my 33-year residential property management career, I've had the unpleasant obligation to tow a lot of cars from overly dense, poorly-designed communities. Today, I'm here to discuss the proposed parking reduction request. The special exception application proposes a parking space-to-resident ratio of 1.21 to 1.46, with the aggregate being 1.35. The problem with this is, it's based solely on the number of residences in the complex. Its total does not include any parking spaces for the typical Gray Star generously-appointed clubhouse, the prospective tenant visits, employees or guests of the pool or tennis courts, or, or even technicians servicing the private sewage pumping station. When included, these requirements leave the community 85 parking spaces short. Applicants' counsel is even asking you to believe that because of the proximity to UVA and Berwick's Road Shopping, that their tenants won't have automobiles. They will walk, ride bicycles, or scooters to all of their points of interest. Historical resident usage patterns at Huntington Village, which is right next door and whose ratio is two spaces per condo plus 20 guests, demonstrate that is not how normal transportation in the area really is. To compound the problem, the one-road design with parking and driveway curb cuts leaves no place for moving or delivery trucks servicing these rental units, which will result in a constant aggravation of the residents. The applicant also stated they require less parking because they will build a bus stop for a nonexistent, non-planned public transportation service on Old Ivy Road. The reduction request included examples of similar Gray Star garden-style properties. Metro University City Apartment in Charlotte, North Carolina is listed at 1.46 per residence. Their website for this community states, "Our proximity to the Link's Blue Line and the area's best shops is what makes us the perfect place to call home." Those tenants are on a metro line, have shops very close by, and have more parking spaces. Finally, what is the effect if their projection is wrong? As there is no off-site overflow parking reasonably available, disputes will certainly follow, putting more burden on county police and others. All of this can be avoided with less density. Thank you.
All right, thank you, and thanks for using the signaling system. So next, we have Barbara Grinsmala, Sally Thomas, and Ivo Remensko.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Barbara Grinsmala, and I'm the president of University Village, an age-restricted condominium with approximately 120 residents who range in age from 55 to 101. My first contact with Gray Star was on a Zoom meeting sometime in July 2021 with our manager, Mr. Reitmeyer, and Mr. Sherman, another board member. At that time, for the benefit of both parties, we proposed an interconnectivity path across our meadow as most destinations that persons from Old Ivy residents will pursue will be to the east and will necessarily take them through our property, both going and coming home. The proposed path for their tenants was rejected. Gray Star then asked for our community to donate some of our footage property so they could construct a multi-use pathway on Old Ivy Road to facilitate interconnectivity. We agreed to provide them with our residents' information and informed them that 66% of our residents would have to vote to agree to the donation of our land. They never followed through, so our solution to help with interparcell connectivity was never acted upon. In April 2022, the association bought back previously-owned land from VDOT. We informed Gray Star of this purchase as it would enable them, with an agreement, to use the UVA land in the Leonard Sandridge facility vicinity. This would allow for an alternative emergency fire access road and also to build a student pathway crossing to Leonard Sandridge to reach their UVA destinations. Once again, our attempt to help was denied. We are frustrated by the lack of concern from Gray Star to its part to ensure that their development plan for Old Ivy residences adheres to the county's neighborhood model, which emphasizes neighbors mutually acceptable interconnectivity. Please don't approve this proposed development or rezone this land until these interconnectivity issues are resolved. Thank you for giving your attention to our concerns for the sake of the wider community.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sally Thomas, resident of University Village these days. I spent 16 years arguing for and helping develop Albemarle's growth management plan that encourages compact developments and interconnectivity. But what came quickly to my mind was the infamous, "I knew Jack Kennedy, you know Jack Kennedy." This old-road Ivy Apartments project is not what the county hoped for in smart growth. Why not? It's certainly dense and within the growth area, but it's also like too many other projects that seem to be desirable developments. It overloads the present facilities, and its interconnectivity just hasn't quite been developed in a way that will work for both residents and the neighborhood. You've heard of several aspects that will greatly impact the neighborhood. Sewage pumping, I still remember the 250 West Pumping Station stink. Inadequate parking with no public transit doesn't help residents reduce their driving. Rather, parking conflicts and frustrations create the worst type of road rage. And finally, there's completely inadequate Old Ivy Road. We heard from the son-owner of Crestwood Farm that even in 1975, the county board said there shouldn't be more residential development on this road. How did that work out? Who cares if it's not an ideal development? No one in this room cares about the growth management plan as much as you all. I'll be preaching now and urge you to shoulder your responsibility to the community as a whole. No one else will but you. Neighbors have our own property and resident safety and way of life in mind. The developer, of course, wants maximum development. University is getting its own residential developments, greatly increasing Ivy Garden units to house 60% of Darden students, so it has limited interest in this farther-away development. But uniquely, the university in Darden may have the answer to road issues with their planned development that provides an alternative to Old Ivy Road with new entrances to Leonard Sandridge Drive, only in concept so far. Without it, this area is trapped. You've been warned that you can't keep cutting proposed density and still keep growth boundaries, but that's attacking a mathematical model, not the underlying goal. Having an attractive, safe, urbanizing area is the ultimate goal. If a development is too dense for the existing facilities, it can destroy that goal more surely. More surely than any numerical calculations. We shouldn't encourage a development, pretty as this one is on paper, that overloads the facilities. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm probably the oldest resident of University Village. My name is David Wood. I practiced law here in Charlottesville for forty-five years. And I've been retired for thirty years. I think that the project that has been presented to you. Is not objectionable. It's just simply much too dense. The need to reduce the size of it and it would be acceptable. They estimate that there will be a thousand additional cars. Between the two underpasses each day. And I find that to be totally unacceptable. And I would like to see you reduce the size of the project and go ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming out. All right, the last two speakers that I have signed up and as I said, we can still have additional speakers are Ivo. Romanesco and Sharon Donovan.
Good evening. I'm Ivo Romanesco. I live in the Jack Jewett District in Farmington. And the Ivy Road corridor, of course. I've been a resident for about forty-eight years, Albemarle County. I've served on disc one, disc two committees in the late nineties. So I feel like I've been following Sally Thomas for quite a while. She was one of the supervisors back then. I'm in support of the neighborhood model and the climate action plan. I speak in favor of Old Ivy residents' plan. I feel like I'm definitely in the minority here this evening. But I sent you a letter in support.
Yes.
But I'm not going to read the letter to you. I want to tell you what I think. I think that the comprehensive plan is in some ways on trial. And so is the neighborhood model district in many of these cases. But I think we've had many charrettes, design, review committees. We've had many meetings and hours spent. Settling many of these issues, but they seem to come back every time. The. The clock is ticking on the growth area. I think that the double-digit growth percentages that are occurring with population in Albemarle and the planning district. Put pressure on Albemarle County. And I would like to see the growth area accommodate as much reasonably good, well-designed development as it can. So that we can preserve the beautiful areas of Albemarle County as long as we can. We have tools available to do that, the neighborhood model. But we need to get more comfortable with density. And with the fact that population is growing and so is traffic. In fact, I recall reading that it's a quote from Sally Thomas years ago. That it seems like we can't get people out of our cars, out of their cars. And so, but yet there's a way to do that and that's through the neighborhood model. And I remember also. Reading or maybe hearing Sally say that if you have public water and public sewer. You can have high rises. You can have dense development. Of course, that's the concept is density. So. When we talk about. The neighborhood model and what it's to do, it is to reduce car use. It is to reduce. And the reliance on cars for everything that we do. It's to preserve the environment. I believe this project does have a scale and a size. To actually improve the prospects of preserving rural areas. Five hundred units, five hundred twenty-five units is a lot, no doubt. But where else do you find a property of this size that can accomplish this purpose of preserving land? So transportation and traffic is a hot topic. I'm not sure it'll be resolved. But I know that we citizens of Albemarle love to complain about traffic, but we really hate to see roads built. I'll bypass on others. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Sharon Donovan.
Hi there. I'm Sharon Donovan. I've lived here all my life. And I live in Bel Air and I work on at McLean Faulkner. Right there at the Cloverleaf. And let me tell you, nobody knows the problems of this location better than me. I used to bowl terrace bowling alley. When I was a little girl, I used to play on the tennis courts on Old Ivy Road. I walked under that bridge many times to the university shopping center when I was young. So I've watched this grow and grow. But you know, it's I don't, I love development. I'm a real estate agent and I think we have a tremendous amount. They've heard me talk about. The need for the rental housing. However, a couple of things going on here. Even if we did provide a low income housing or meet that need for how do people work? They have two cars if they're live there or they're going to get to and from work with this traffic. They talk about the deceleration lane or the access to twenty-nine South. If you have those cars adding into that traffic, making that right-hand turn in the morning. That just backs up the road over the bridge, which I use all the time. So every single time you hear, oh, this is a good idea. There are multiple bad ideas. The other thing is fascinating. And I was going to title my short story that I'm going to write about this, which is turning into a long short story. Is it's going to be called the sidewalks to nowhere. And it's like really a bad idea if we have all these sidewalks that encourage pedestrian traffic. To a very dangerous situation, which until we fix those dangerous situations on both ends here. As well as bicycle traffic or scooter traffic. I don't see how we can move forward in any competent way. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this matter who has not had a chance? Yes, sir. Come on down. And I also will go to see if there's others online who might be waiting as well. But we'll take care of the folks in person.
Good evening. My name's John Matthews. I live at forty-five Canterbury Road in Bel Air. And.
Mr. Matthews, you might have to speak up. There's a lot of background noise from the lights for us.
Okay, sorry. My name's John Matthews. I'm a Bel Air resident. I live at forty-five Canterbury Road in Bel Air. And I'm very familiar with this site. I've ran around it and walked across it for the last thirty years. My office for over a decade was on Old Ivy Road and my new office for the last twenty years is. Only a stone's throw away from the site as well. Many of the points in favor of this project have been sent to you, I guess, and some of them have been mentioned already. However, I'd like to add a few additional comments. The applicant is asking you to approve housing close to town. On a parcel that's virtually surrounded by university-owned or university-controlled property. So this project is not suitable. So if this project is not suitable in this location, where do you think it would be suitable? It seems obvious to me that this is an ideal location. So let me go out on a limb, but I believe it's a strong limb. As you may know, a growing number of planning commissions and jurisdictions around the country have actually asked developers. To increase the density of their projects. This might sound contrary to everything you've seen or heard. But I suggest you do the same. You ask the developer to increase the density, not decrease it. And you might ask why, why increasing density may seem illogical to you on the surface, but it's not. Increasing density promotes a more efficient use of the land. The land is finite. It really helps you utilize the land that's available. It's more compact and it's a more sustainable development that you, some of you asked about. Increased density would permit the developer. To provide a higher contribution to the improvements of Old Ivy Road. I know the problems with it. We all do. Would also allow the developer to increase his contributions towards affordable housing. And keep in mind, the benefits. The improvements to Old Ivy Road would benefit more than just the residents of this development would benefit the entire community. I mean, that should. Should be obvious. And I know you guys are planning on. Studying increasing the growth area or possibly increasing the growth area, but to pick up on what the last speaker said. I think you should first seriously consider increasing the density in the most logical, reasonable and appropriate areas. This project is a poster child for that increased density. A vote on this project.
Your time is expired.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I would ask you to support the project. Thank you.
All right. And to, I don't see anyone else lining up. Is there anyone online who has signed up to speak on this matter?
Yes, ma'am. I have three people right now. If you could. The first one is Kathleen Jump. Please unmute yourself. Please state your name and where you're located. You have three minutes to speak and your time starts when you start talking.
Thank you. I'm Kathleen Jump and I live in the Jack Jewett District. I submitted a long letter to you last week discussing how the Board of Supervisors in nineteen eighty-five wrestled. With this R fifteen zoning application and the restrictive proffer that was offered. And I thank those of you who have plowed through it. Those supervisors agreed that it made sense that this land be built at urban density, given its location and proximity to the university in the city. But even in nineteen eighty-five, they recognized that although it had all the other necessary infrastructure, it did not have a road. Thus the restrictive proffer. And I was comforted to read that the planning staff agrees that this nineteen eighty-five proffer has not been satisfied. And I heard some commissioners agree tonight. In terms of added traffic from this project, you've already heard that BDOT's twenty nineteen traffic counts. Were eighty-three hundred. Gray Star Zone Traffic Impact Analysis predicts forty-three twenty-six. More for its project's contribution, which equals a fifty-two percent increase in traffic on Old Ivy Road due to this project. A few more points about this proposal. Gray Star has submitted a list of twenty-seven improvements to Old Ivy Road since nineteen eighty-five, twenty-seven. On aerial photos dating from nineteen ninety to twenty twenty-one. Some of these are duplicates. Some of these are mystifying. Leonard Sandridge Road, for example, was specifically built concurrent with construction of John Paul Jones Arena. To carry traffic from the athletic precinct to the bypass. And as staff itself notes, all these improvements were required. As Old Ivy Road properties were developed over time and none represent a net gain to Old Ivy Road. But if you look carefully at these photos, they do show something significant. All the under undeveloped land on the south side of Old Ivy Road has gradually disappeared. It's been replaced by office buildings and parking lots. And this is just the kind of activity that the board considered in nineteen eighty-five. When it admitted that if other development occurred, this land might never be able to be developed. Gray Star proffers do not help Old Ivy Road as a whole in any way. I'm not a historian, but I've come to learn and respect the history of county roads. My impression is that Old Ivy Road is an eighteenth century road with a nineteenth century overpass. Both of which have degraded since nineteen eighty-five. Concrete falls from the bridge. It's unlit. It floods. Rocks shut out from land near the Miller Center. It's really a rathole. It's totally out of place in this urban area. VDOT and Albemarle County have been in conversation about solutions for years. In terms of transportation, the UVA shuttle, which used to serve twenty-four twenty Old Ivy Road.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Your time is up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I did not hear a, I didn't hear a warning. So sorry. Can I, can I just finish? It's true that Gray Star can't be held responsible for the current poor conditions of Old Ivy Road. But in nineteen eighty-five, the board created a genie and put it in a bottle. With a stopper and instructed that the bottle should not be opened until conditions had improved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jump. Is there anyone else who would like to speak who hasn't had a chance this evening?
I have three more people online.
All right.
I have Megan McGee. Megan, please state your name, address, affiliated with a group or organization. You'll have three minutes. You will not get a warning and I will let you know when your three minutes are up.
Hi, thank you. My name is Megan McGee and I'm a resident and homeowner at Huntington Village. Next to this property. Any question? I want to speak up because I believe I bring a different perspective to the conversation. To give you more context on who's speaking to you, since you can't see or hear me. I'm twenty-eight years old. I graduated from the Darden School where I was student body president. And represented a student body of nearly eight hundred graduate students, at least half of whom live in the. Huntington Town Homes and Ivy Garden Apartments Town Homes or apartment buildings. I'm a previous resident of Ivy Gardens and I'm a current homeowner and resident at Huntington Village. I'm an avid runner and hiker. I have two dogs that I walk every day along Old Ivy Road. And I drive along this road every day to get everywhere in this community. If this development had been around when I moved to this area in twenty nineteen, it would have been a contender for my living situation. With that said, now that I'm familiar with the area, its residents and land and road use. And I care about the responsible development of this area as a Charlottesville resident. I oppose this project for many reasons. The three main reasons are that community need does not exist. And when I say this, I'm speaking. About the graduate student population, which I'm very aware of its lifestyle. The natural area and wetlands and that the road is dangerous and unsustainable. In terms of community need, the Gray Star representative. Mentioned there are no other rentals in the area that are fully rentals. This is false due to the Ivy Garden Apartment Complex, which is located on this road. And is owned and managed by affiliates of University of Virginia. And the Ivy Garden Complex has. Plans to expand that within the next five years. Because of this existing and future need or future. Availability, Darden and the Law School both have sufficient housing already. And like I said, they have plans for building more close to the school. Secondly, the natural area and wetlands in this area are put at risk through the proposal. The areas in the proposal with single-family and duplex. Housing that were on the plans take over the Rivana Trail.
Sorry, your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Taylor. Taylor, please unmute yourselves, state your name and address if you're affiliated with the group or organization. You'll have three minutes to speak, starting when you start speaking and there will be no warning when your time is up.
My name's Taylor Algren. I'm a resident and owner in Huntington Village. I work from home and my wife is going into her second year at UVA Darden School of Business. I think everyone has made some really great points that need to get addressed if development does occur. At Old Ivy residences, I agree with our neighbors at. University Village that the, the, the road is dangerous, the Old Ivy Road is dangerous. And there are many potential points of conflict. Just quick two stories that I've experienced personally is I was running on the western. End of Old Ivy Road just two months ago and. I was at the edge of the road, running up the road after I crossed from Bel Air. And a driver honked at me apparently for being a pedestrian in the road. Along this edge of the road because they couldn't pass because other cars were coming the other direction. And then. And then proceeded to accelerate, um, by me at about twenty-five miles an hour, um, grazing the edge of my, um, my left, um, my left shoulder. On the other side, uh, on the eastern, uh, the western side of Old Ivy Road, I, uh, I was biking, um, back up, um, up the hill from the, the railway bridge and a vehicle, um, passed me at thirty-five miles an hour, um, honking along the way, um, you know, just missing me by about two feet. Um, so these are examples of, personal examples that, um, other residents in our neighborhood have talked about, um, to illustrate the, the, the concern that I have about, um, Old Ivy Road. I do think there is some great suggestions from others about, um, hey, why isn't Leonard Sandridge Road being, um, being utilized? I did, uh, I did make a comment about that at the last planning meeting with, um, Old Ivy residences. And that hasn't been, uh, that hasn't been addressed, uh, a multimodal path on Leonard Sandridge Road. Uh, and also a, a vehicle vehicular exit there would be a, a, a great solution, um, to making this, this happen. Um, so in summary, I think we've got some, some good, um, aspects of this project. Uh, I think I support rejecting the proposal as, as proposed. And, um, I look forward to the commute, continued discussion to, um, you know, create the most, um, multimodal transportation, um, and, um, outcomes for, for the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carolyn, is there anyone else? You, is that the last three?
Uh, one more, David Sprague. David, please state your name, address, your affiliated with the group, organization. And your time starts when you start. You will not get a one-minute warning.
Good evening. Um, David Sprague here. Thanks for having the Zoom connection hooked up today. I lived in the Jack Jewett District at five hundred Crestwood Drive. Although I live adjacent to the property being considered for rezoning, I speak today not as a resident of University Village, but as a resident of the county who spends much time on Old Ivy and the adjacent roads as a walker, recreational biker, and a volunteer who regularly gathers trash along the sides of these roads. I have written Mr. Cameron Langio about my observations concerning safety issues on Old Ivy Road and have communicated to him my observations how other communities in Virginia have successfully dealt with difficult traffic problems similar to ours on Old Ivy. These suggestions for improving the safety of Old Ivy are listed in my mailings to Mr. Langio. And most importantly to note, don't presume new railroad overpasses. I have been assured that you will receive copies of these communications and appreciate your reviewing them. Consequently, I will not repeat the information in them now. The county has decided that it is best for our greater community to concentrate development in limited areas of the county and to allow greater density of development in these areas. Such an approach to be successful requires good infrastructure to be built if it doesn't already exist. If high-density development occurs with no provision for adequate infrastructure, a deterioration of the quality of life should be expected for both the new residents as well as for the existing residents of the county. By infrastructure, I am referring to good road systems, walkways, bike paths, water and sewer systems, public recreational green spaces, and adequate control of noise, air, and light pollution. My concern with the present rezoning request is that there is no good plan to assure the needed infrastructure will exist to support the higher density requested. The most egregious deficiency is the state of the pedestrian vehicular road we call OIV Road. Regardless of your action on this rezoning application tonight, I hope that this meeting will trigger a renewed public discussion of possible options that could improve the safety of Old Ivy, even if the overpasses are not destroyed and rebuilt.
Mr. Sprague.
Thank you for your time and effort you spend on this committee's important work.
Thank you.
All right.
That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, and I assume there's no one else from the audience wishes to speak. So what I'm actually going to do now is put this commission in recess for five minutes. We've been sitting for three solid hours without moving. So we're going to take a five-minute break until nine o'clock and we will refrain commissioners from discussing this proposal in any way with anyone but yourselves during recess. You may speak yourself as you usually do. Planning Commission back to order and we will now continue. We have finished the, uh, public comment period. And now we have a opportunity for the applicant to come back up, uh, for a short period to address any comments they heard or any other, uh, additional points they wish to make. It's time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we appreciate the opportunity. I want to say upfront, um, please know that we have responses to all of the comments and questions raised. If there's, since I don't have much time, if there's any that I do not get to, please know that it's not that we don't have one. Please ask us. We will have, we've got our civil engineer. We have our traffic engineer here tonight, obviously, as well as others. You've heard tonight mostly from our adjacent, the future adjacent neighbors. We ask that you keep in mind several important things. They live where they do because it's an excellent location. You talked about how the Gray Star, uh, Darden students lived at Huntington Village. Mr. Bivens, you're exactly right. When I was in law school, my first year, I lived at Ivy Gardens. Why? Because I could walk to class. It wasn't very affordable, frankly, because it was the only option. It was really pretty expensive for what you got in particular. But it was a fantastic location. That's where most of the law students lived. It was perfect. I ask that you keep in mind the consideration, the, the needs of the future residents of Old Ivy residents. Those who are not here to speak tonight because they don't have a home to speak, to live in yet in this location. We know there's a market here. Gray Star knows there's a market. They would not be going through this process and this incredible expense if they weren't very, very certain there is a market here. Many of the speakers you heard from tonight, while they have raised concerns about traffic and safety, moved to Huntington Village or to University Village within just the last few years. So if the traffic was that bad, I'm not sure why they moved here. Regardless, Gray Star understands there's need for traffic improvements and pedestrian and safety improvements. That's why the project commits to all of the improvements that we discussed earlier. Lots of valid concerns about the lack of pedestrian, full pedestrian facilities on Old Ivy. As noted, there are a lot of existing sidewalks on the south side. Gray Star would commit to a sidewalk that would go from the northbound ramp all the way to Ivy Gardens. And there's a map I can show you where there's an existing paved path that goes straight up from there between Ivy Gardens and Crestwood Drive, the driveway to University Village, goes right to Leonard Sandridge Drive. So we would be able to make that connection. We would like to be able to make an even, an additional connection, one that goes from the back even more directly to Leonard Sandridge Drive. As noted, however, we don't own that land. We have to negotiate with our neighbors. There were comments tonight that said that Gray Star has rejected their reasonable proposals. I'm happy to go into detail, but please know that Gray Star has been negotiating diligently and in good faith with their neighbors for these access easements. We have drafted written proposals with significant monetary compensation offers. They've offered up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for easements. But unfortunately, the easement demand was three million dollars. So we, we want you to know that their negotiations have been, in good faith, have been reasonable. Unfortunately, the demand was for a large percentage of that money to be paid prior to tonight. Obviously, we did not think that was a reasonable request or demand. Unfortunately, that's where we are. Gray Star has committed to continue those negotiations, has expressed that in numerous occasions. I know they want to continue, but we want to make sure that you understand that Gray Star is not being unreasonable. We're not sure it's really all about the traffic. University Village has the ability to build three more phases under its zoning approvals from nineteen ninety, after the nineteen eighty-five proffer. Their phases one and two have ninety-four units. So assuming they're somewhere in the similar range, you're talking about another hundred and fifty-nine units. So I, I ask that you think about that and what that would mean to their concerns about traffic and safety and pedestrian infrastructure. We hope they will be raising the same concerns at that time. Um, so we just want to make that very clear. Gray Star is committed to continuing to negotiate with all of its neighbors. They want to improve the safety and the traffic issues and they're continuing to make those contributions. And as, uh, somebody indicated, make the connections as we, we've spent a lot of time talking with Mr. McDermott and VDOT and other folks try, you know, we've had our traffic engineer putting suggestions together, our civil engineers drawing plans, submitting them to various off-site owners with, um, engineered plans for paths, for connections, for road improvements. We just can't do it unilaterally. We have a number of responses we would love to make, um, but obviously my time is short. So we ask that you again, just keep in mind the overall benefits. You, you have a lot of important community factors and considerations to balance. We get that. We hope that you will consider the benefits of the location of this property and the many, many benefits that the project has committed to in its application. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If there's any burning question a commissioner would like Ms. Long to address the applicant, well, and it will, you could spend five minutes on that, but no more.
I think we suggest and chair. So I think you should, um, give some serious consideration to your traffic plan because it was done when the university was out. So if you're saying it was May sixth, university wasn't in session then, and that's what you say in the document. So I'm just quoting what's in the document. So you might want to look at that again in your document on, I don't, um, page, on page. On page. Let's see, that's on, on your first chapter, second page two, you said data collection peak hour, seven AM this to nine, four to six PM, and it was the, on Thursday, May sixth, twenty twenty-one. So just to realize that that's an off-peak period. At least that's what I'm doing by here.
I certainly don't question what, that, what you're reading, Mr. Bivens. I, I, if I may, I, and I might ask Kevin to, um, confirm this. Our traffic engineer from Timmons Group says that that date was, um, agreed to by VDOT and everyone. I think it was still in session, but I could be wrong.
Classes were ended and a typical pattern is that you have much less traffic on the road when people don't have to go to class.
They're not there. So just, just sort of, you know, so, so that your numbers, if they, if a different kind of scrutiny comes to it, just, you might want to think about since Kevin said there's a way to sort of look at a multiplier for that, but you want to be sure that that's that you're, that you just sort of verify that. That's all. I'm not going to call your traffic numbers into concern on this point. I'm just saying, when you look at that date, that's a date that you might want to be concerned of. The other thing you might want to be concerned about is that many of the buildings on the south side of, of that road were empty. The big new university building that was over there had only a receptionist in it and maybe a, a person, one or three people. So there's also a utilization of that space that was severely different, um, in May twenty twenty-one. So just, just take that into consideration and think about how your narrative might change if in fact those numbers are somewhat different.
Certainly. I, I do think that was accounted for though. Again, I wasn't in the scoping meeting when our traffic engineer and Mr. McDermott and the VDOT representatives. But as I understand it, those terms and scopes are agreed upon or, or that they have, you all have to approve them, but.
That's correct. We, uh, when we, we agreed to the date that the, uh, that the traffic counts were done. I, I believe it sounds like the, um, that regular county and city schools were in session, but the university was in, um, was in their finals week or whatever. So regular classes may not have been going on. Is it, uh, but we did have a ten percent, uh, factors.
No need to solve it here, but it is.
Be aware, be, just be aware that there's some, that that's a date that some people may not have been using. You, you, it was not, was not a typical date. Let's just put that.
And for what it's worth, our traffic engineer just pulled a calendar that said that was the day courses ended and exams started the next day.
Right. And all of us who have been connected to the university knows as soon as courses are, are over, we don't move.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate the feedback. Again, I thought that, that all of those factors were still accounted for with the ten percent increase, but we certainly appreciate.
I'm not just so beware that there could be some concern over that.
Sure. Regardless of our decision tonight, you will have another hearing with the Board of Supervisors. I think he's just giving you some tips. So let's, I would like to bring this back to the commission now. Um, I think we've, there, there could be many. I think we could probably go another hour with back and forth. I know I could, but I think that we have enough information to have a reasonable deliberation at this point. So with that, who, so for, and for your benefit, we usually just talk about, you know, sort of where we stand at this point or other concerns that we still have. Sometimes we influence each other, uh, to a different, different sway in terms of where we're leaning.
The Madam Chair can ask a question.
Yeah.
See your question. So we, how are we going to deal with it? So we have two different items, but they were presented at the same time. So how?
My understanding is we have to do each one as its own decision. So we make a, have a discussion and make a motion.
So we could have a combined public hearing regarding two different matters. Uh, but the way that this was initially presented at the outset, it was presented that it would be two separate public hearings. So just in case there's anybody that reserved comments on the steep slopes.
Particular items such as the step.
Correct. So my recommendation is based on how it was, uh, introduced to begin with, that there be a separate public hearing for the steep slopes matter. Um, again, procedurally, you could do it either way, but since it was introduced as being too separate, um, my suggestion would be that we have just this public hearing and just consider at this point, um, uh, the, um, uh, rezoning of the zoning map amendment and then do the, uh, steep slopes ZMA separately.
Right. Well, the whole opening of the hearing and all of that, for that item.
Ju- just for the steep slope CMA. Yes, ma'am.
That was my initial question.
You may have another one.
Well, yeah, thank you for that clarification because I was, I was unclear on how to deal with that because, you know, there were two. So I, I'm going to refer to this question of the proffer nineteen eighty-five as a gate. So I think the planning, um, or not the planning commission, but the Board of Supervisors at the time created a gate. That is a concept that I believe is very useful, and particularly as we consider, um, amendments to our comprehensive plan. What we deal with project after project here are, are, and, and, and our, our staff will bring negatives that they're always pretty much the same two negatives, right? Overburdening roads and overcrowding schools. But we have failing, in this case, we have failing intersections. Uh, we have a dangerous road condition. And what the supervisors did, basically put that gate that once these issues are solved, once we have the infrastructure for development, we open up that gate for additional density. That's opposite to the way we work. We build a density, we fail our infrastructure, and then we all complain about not having the infrastructure, not having the schools, not having the roads available. So I think here we have an opportunity to see how these gates can actually work and use it as a model as we think about amendments to the comprehensive plan. So specifically to this project, I, I, I believe. I believe that those requirements have not been met, and I think it's, it's pretty evident to everybody in terms of in terms of the failing road. Uh, and that road is not getting any better. It is dangerous. Um, I drive through it often as well. I think everybody in this community does and, and understands it's very narrow. It's barely a two-lane road. So those are, those are considerations that we need to weigh because it is, it is a, a hazard. Um, and more cars, you know, four thousand plus, um, you know, May twenty twenty-one, you're still under COVID. I can tell you university was not under, and it was a lot more than ten percent that were not there.
Right.
And a lot more than ten percent uh, they were not at UVA at the time. Um, so I think the recommendation that Commissioner Vivens was saying is as we in the future, I think this, this project should redo traffic and get a better sense. Uh, but more importantly, uh, we need to address the road um issues. So there's other issues that were raised. I, 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 I believe that there's um you know, it's a setback issues that we need to consider and see. I think that's going to be in our next uh, when we talk about the, 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 the step back. I think water uh, and storm, storm drain um considerations. I know that we don't see as much here, but we didn't even hear about it. And I think it's a, it's a challenging sight uh for stormwater. So there's a lot of issues, but I, I can stop at the road.
I'd actually like to tag on to that just briefly. Um, yeah. You mentioned the fact that we often uh get to the situation where we've, you know, we've overbuilt and now we really need this new school and it, and we're, you know, several steps behind. Same thing with roads and the, the argument that we often refer to roads is that we can't get VDOTs to give us funding to upgrade an intersection or build a new road, whatnot, until we show that the demand is already there and, and in fact usually is exceeding the capacity. So you, you're sort of forced to get yourself in a bad situation in order to get the new road improvement. But this is even a little more tricky than that because we have the railroad involved. And I have had many years of experience trying to get railroads to do things. I can remember the mayor of Charlottesville could not get any railroad company to return his phone calls. I mean, he's the mayor and they don't care. So I'm not saying the railroads do not care, but I'm just saying that is very difficult to work with them in terms of changing overpasses, changing railroad trestles, changing anything railroad. One of the commenters actually made that, not tonight, but through a letter that the underpasses sort of served as a traffic calming device. Um, I have, I have seen cars floating very surprised UVA students, in fact, not realizing that wasn't just a puddle um and having cars totaled because that'd be towed out uh because they were, you know, underwater. And so um, I think that's make, that just adds an additional wrinkle that, that makes it that much harder to to sort of make the traditional argument of, well, we just need to exceed the capacity so we can demonstrate the need. I think the need has already been demonstrated. Um, and, and, and I agree. I, I think that um, if somebody made this comment from the audience earlier, if we just keep saying, well, we need the density, we need the density to save the rural area. And I agree, I drove through the rural area to get to this meeting tonight and I really appreciate it. And I live in the rural area. But if we don't solve some of these problems before we allow that density, they're going to just drive people out. People are not going to want to live here and they will vote with their feet. So that, that I just, you know, really felt like that was worth tagging on to.
Well, and, and, and I know it, I would add that, that when you have these gates, what it will incentivize is ways to make the, the needed changes, the needed improvements to the infra, infrastructure. And, and look at.
Which is different here.
Look at partnerships because until that happens, that additional density can't happen. So the gates can be very effective.
And, and I, I will say, and I'll just now stop talking and turn it over to my colleagues, but I do believe this site should be developed. I do believe it is the appropriate site for infill. And I do believe that it can, and and everyone's been trying to make these connections. They can be made in s- somehow. It's not, it's not physically impossible to make them. There are legal issues or the differences in agreement on price and whatnot, but, but it is possible to make a fantastic, well-connected development that does have density. So, yeah, that, that, that I believe, but I, I don't feel like we can put that density on the road and the railroad on uh bridges in the situation that we're in. That's kind of where I am. And I usually wait to be the last to talk, but I just got excited.
That's okay. That's okay. You do.
Gentlemen, who else would like to?
All right. So I think when we talk about density, I think we need to think beyond just density of housing, but density of service. And here's an area where you have an opportunity for density of housing, but you have an infrastructure deficit. And so even if we put the housing there in terms of a density of service, we're going to be lacking. And, and so I think that it certainly doesn't meet the nineteen eighty-five criteria. Um, I think there are some things that would change this in my mind if there was a access to Leonard Sandridge, for example. Um, if there was a solid, reliable mass transit option. But as it stands.
Where did you, do you want to go?
I, I can go or you can go.
Sure. I'll, I'll be real quick. Um, I, I think there's some really nice aspects of the proposal. But also, and I'm, I'm not afraid of the density and, and the size of the project or anything like that. I think that's all fine and well. But there's a couple of issues that to me are, are showstoppers for me at the moment. Um, one um is the traffic piece, and I believe that, that the staff's recommendation in that regard is, is very strong. I don't believe that the transportation piece has been satisfied according to the board's stipulation on that. Uh, uh, that hasn't been proven to me tonight. Um, and the second piece is the, the affordable housing, right? So we talk about, we want to be an inclusive community. Um, and I certainly understand uh Mrs. Long's explanation and how they got to where they got. But nothing prevents you from doing above what the policy asks either. And is, there's just no way that I could vote for five hundred and twenty-five, afford to me, five hundred and twenty-five units fourteen? And, and Commissioner Bivens made this a great point. When you say affordable housing, you think of people in poverty. It's not the case. It's this regular men and women who have a, a job that's very admirable to the community. They just don't make two hundred thousand dollars a year, right? Um, and so there is a, a significant need for that. Um, and that's a really, really big sticking point for me. But as this moves forward, I, I would just offer a couple of suggestions. Um, I would present on the quality of the green space for usability, usability, just more. Um, we saw a handsomely done rendering that was shown. And to me, you quickly see where parking and asphalt is a priority in that rendering. And it really felt like the grain space is just an afterthought. We can fit a little, you know, sliver here, sliver there. Um, but I'm just thinking, if you want to go throw a baseball around, you break a window. Like, there's no quality grain space. I think that's a missed opportunity, at least from that rendering. So this is something to think about as you advance this proposal to the, to the board. I would also share that um maybe state in a little bit more detail regarding the, the bus stop. And, you know, I think we heard very clearly that there is no transit to this, this area. And so with that being said, you could kind of get away with just sticking a pole in the ground with the cat sign on it. And I see that done. I mean, you drive around different neighborhoods and that's the bus stop. There's no shelter. There's nowhere to sit. Uh, you're burning up sweating while you're waiting for the bus to come and you know, so just kind of think about that a little bit more. Uh, I've seen your proffer here that you're, you're doing that, but there's no more detail to it. My computer went to sleep on me. Um, the, the last thing I would just share is again, sustainability goals and assets of every applicant, and I get the same answer, which is when it comes to the building that it's too early, we haven't thought about that. And the minute that was said, someone put up a, a rendering of elevation. I was like, whoa, somebody thought of something, right? And so in the design process, those conversations, they happen early. And nobody just draws a square on a piece of paper and says, oh, it's just a building. Like, somebody has to think about numbers, right? Your developers. So people are having conversations about, you know, the mechanical systems we might be thinking of using. We wanted to be such that everybody has lower energy costs, right? Where we're going to shade our windows, right? You don't have to, you know, proffer anything, but share about those conversations you're having, right? I think that's really appropriate. Um, you know, when you look at our climate action plan and our uh comprehensive plans and so forth, give me something that says that you are truly a partner in helping us achieve our vision. And I'm not really seeing that, or not just this proposal, but many proposals that come by, right? Um, we'll get all the details in the world on sidewalks and the slope of concrete and things like that, but we don't really need to see that right now. Honestly, I don't really care about the sidewalk details. I want to know about the, the footprint that you're going to make is going to impact this community for fifty to seventy-five years. Tell me something about that. I don't care about the sidewalk, right? I care about it, but not the details of it, right? Not at this stage. So I'll end there. So that's kind of where I'm at and just some advice as you move forward. So.
Yeah. Yeah. So along those lines, I mean, when the question was raised about stormwater, the response was that we would meet the county's stormwater requirements. But I think truly being sustainable means exceeding requirements, not just meeting them. Um, and, and I would, I would hope that there would be opportunities to look at what sustainability really means. You know, to your point about quality green space. Um, you can have green space that's choked with Atlantis and multi-floor rows that's unusable, or you can have quality green space that people can actually use. They're not the same thing. So spending some time and effort on sort of defining what you mean by um sustainable design, that's, that's important.
So I, so, so, so I'm going to start with just one thing, just as a point of information, because I, since there are people who live in at Huntington and Ivy Gardens and, and, and University Village, to just share with you that anything that happens at Ivy Gardens will come back here because it's not owned by the university. It's owned by the university foundation. So in some of your narratives, it would be helpful if you would appreciate that that project will come back through us and it's just not going to be done as some people sort of alluded that there would never be any, 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 any uh any review of that. So that's actually would not be what happens. So I will sort of go to the point that while my colleagues are able to sort of um perceive what the board of supervisors were thinking in nineteen eighty-five, I am not that capable. And all I know is that the board of supervisors in nineteen eighty-five said that that body, when something comes before, it has to determine whether or not the conditions on a particular road have been met. And so recently people have heard, that's not my issue. I'm not a member of the board of supervisors. I was never elected to that. I can sit here and say that I have some concerns, which I do, and you know, I've been here as long as other people have been here and sort of know what that whole area is. I've had real estate on that, on that road. And so I intimately know what that road is. But my piece is, is that on this particular, on that particular property, not at University um Village, not at Huntington, not at Ivy's uh, at um at Ivy Gardens, but on that particular suite of, uh, suite of parcels, the board of supervisors said that it has to be improved to the satisfaction of the board of supervisors of Albemarle County. They did not say the planning commission. They did not say the architectural review board. They held that decision for them, which is the next step in this process. And so all of us all know that our supervisors will talk to us because that's what they do. So we will have the opportunity to give them all the input and share with them all the pieces that we've heard tonight. But I will say for me, this is not my decision to say yes. This is my decision to say a few things. I continue to be deeply concerned that a project of this significance from a company, from a global company at a time both in the UK and here and other places that, that they sit are I've taken the position that the, that the accessible housing that they're going to have is going to be at that low, at that low level. That disturbs me. And so that's enough to get me into a no. The fact that you're coming to a community that has had lots of conversations about affordable housing and how do we keep people who we're trying to keep living here and working here in places that are reasonable for them to live? And that's the offer for us this evening is, is seventeen units. Doesn't work for me. That's enough to push me into no. There's lots of things about the project that I like. I would hope, as I've said on a number of occasions, that I, 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 I wish and I say this because you have, you're an international brand, but I wish as an international brand, you would, you would push the limits on what I, I, I see as American development, American sort of rental development. Um, I do appreciate the fact that there are, there are three different sort of housing types there, but the design of those three different housing types, as I was looking at the, as I, as I was looking at the um uh, the plan that I think the, the architect showed me is that if I'm in the apartments over here, I'm not supposed to go over here to the single-family houses. I've got all the stuff. I, I see you shaking your head, but we've all lived in communities where you've got your own pool over there. You've got your own basketball courts and pickleball courts over there, and we have ours over here. And I'm going to be really calling the management company if I see those people from the apartment side of the property coming over here and dealing with them. You'll deal with that in some way. You'll figure out how to sort of create community of those three different housing types. But that was something that I said, if you're really thinking about community, which you say you are, I believe you're a managing partner. I believe he is. Then I think there are ways in which you put those amenities in the community that you create opportunities for people to be together and that the multi-story people over here don't have their little pool in their dog park and the housing in the townhouses over here have their pool and their dog park. I think that's about, that, that will end and that will sort of, that will sort of evolve into, to, I think the types of divisions that I think your project's trying not to do. But besides that, I really do think and hope that you can have conversations with the university about getting an exit onto, onto, onto Leonard Sandberg. I think if you could figure that out, the Leonard, I think if you can figure out the Leonard Sandberg road and exit, you will have you will, you will have unlocked the gold, you will have gotten the golden ticket. I, I just, I mean, so I don't know how you do that. You all are sophisticated enough. You all have all the various buttons that you can push in that administration. I would encourage you to do that, and I would particularly encourage you to do that before you meet with the supervisors. Because that's going to be, I think, a thing that's going to get them to a yes, and that when my supervisor talks to me, I will say, well, you know, I was not, I was not encouraged by that. I did think if that could happen, that that would be a good thing for this project, but right now I'm not encouraged to say, I'm, well, I'm, I will say to my colleagues, I'm, I cannot say yes to the project tonight. But we're trying our very best to give you all the various pieces so that you can get to all the yes from the supervisors. As they said in nineteen eighty-five, it is, it is improved to the satisfaction of the board of supervisors of Albemarle County have been, has been adequately addressed. You know, that, that I think is what we're talking about here. At least that's what I'm talking about here. Um, and this is my district, but that doesn't mean anything. I'm not parochial in that manner. You know, I, I'm in, I'm, I live in Albemarle County, but I do think that this is the decision that you need to be prepared and be on your, and be on your game when you see our supervisors, because this is their decision and they are going to act like it's their decision.
All right. I have a, I have a question. Thank you. I have a question for council, which is just that we also have, we, we haven't obviously put it forward, any motion in particular on this rezoning request yet. But we also have the uh amending the steep slopes overlay district and step back waiver and the parking reduction. Is it possible to, to bring those into a motion or do we need to consider each one of those individually?
I would suggest separate motions on each of them. The special exceptions do not require a separate public hearing, but they each should uh receive a special, a separate motion.
Right. Because each have their own letters and numbers.
Correct.
Wanted to check that. All right. So um
Is it not, is it not moot? Suppose just.
It may be. I just wanted to find, before we go forward, that we also, if we decided to.
Go forward.
Yes. Then we would also need to
Okay.
go through all of those as well. So I don't know that. I, I think that, you know, I'll just say that the affordable housing piece is a big deal for me. I understood the math when you, when I read it in the application and again, when you restated it tonight. But I still don't find it acceptable, given the, the situation that our community is in. And yes, the county did decide to go forward in a way that makes people come in and get rezonings and, and then the county tries to get other improvements as part of that. And, and then the county tries to get other improvements as part of that. Affordable housing, parks, trails, whatnot. That's the county's decision. If it were up to me, I would just rezone everything and be done with it. It's not up to me. I, I sit at a much lower level in the county. So, um, with that, I, I just don't think that we have what we need tonight to be supportive of this. That's what I'm hearing from everyone. So I'm going to ask if there is a, a motion to deny or to approve, whichever way you're leaning at this time.
Uh, Madam Chair, I would like a motion, I'd like to make a motion on, are you going to give this to me?
Ask if they're going to, I have it on my tablet.
Oh, you do? Thank you. Sorry. I don't have a tablet. I do, but I don't have it. Sorry. Oh, thank you.
I was probably pulling it up.
I could pull it up as well if you need it.
Oh, I see what you're doing.
There you go. Thanks.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I move to recommend denial of ZMA twenty twenty-one zero eight. Oh, sorry. Madam Chair, I move to recommend denial of ZMA twenty twenty-one zero eight Old Ivy Residences for the reasons stated in the staff report and as discussed by this commission.
There are second?
Second.
Discussion. The applicant's asked to approach. It's all right if you want to make it, but I don't want to hear a defense of the, any of the particulars of the proposal. This would have to be something very unique you want to say right now.
Thank you. I wanted to thank you for the feedback and the suggestion and guidance. We made note of it and appreciate it very much. We would be happy to and would request a deferral so that we could uh, get together internally and follow up on some of your suggestions and guidance and hopefully bring it back into a um, form that could be more acceptable to you all.
And so to be clear, you're requesting deferral of, of this item right now and then the one that is coming up, but we still have to have a public hearing for that, right?
Though there's a motion on the floor right now, if there's a planning commissioner that's interested in making a motion to defer, that would be up to a planning commissioner to make that motion, but the motion that's on the floor should be withdrawn. If, if in fact the commissioner is interested in making a motion to defer.
Thank you, and thank you. Okay.
Madam Chair, I would, I would, I would, um, pull my, I would pull my motion that I've just put forward and hopefully would be sent it. I think you seconded it.
All right. So there's been a motion to withdraw the motion.
And, and I would withdraw as well.
Okay, so that, that motion is now killed.
That's correct. The motion's been withdrawn. There was still, if a, if a commissioner is interested in making a motion to defer, that motion would need to come from a commissioner.
Yes, we still need to do that.
But it would, it would be noted that the request came, uh, there was other requests of the applicant.
All right. Would somebody like to make the motion to defer in acknowledgement of the applicant's request?
Madam, Madam Chair, hearing from our applicant this evening, I would, um, make a motion to defer the matter before us. It is. Before ZMA twenty twenty-one zero eight Old Ivy Residences as requested by, as requested by the applicant, and I don't have a date certain. I don't, I will, I, it's a, it's a date to be determined between the applicant and, and, uh, and our staff.
And I, I'm receiving an indication from the applicant that the applicant is requesting an indefinite or a deferral to an indefinite date.
Oh, I'm glad you could, I'm glad you can see that.
I think there's a block of sight line between this giant monitor and the applicant. Yes, okay.
Well, then, um.
That's fine.
Your, your motion is sufficient at this point.
I was going to say, I think that is. Okay, so that's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. I would just say that I very much look forward to seeing how the applicant works on all these things, because I think that we do believe that density in the urban ring is a good thing. But we, and, and, and that the, many of the problems are not insurmountable. Um, so with that, it's, it's no other discussion. We can just call the vote.
Oh, Carolyn, let's go do it.
Okay, Ms. Firehawk?
Yes.
Mr. Karazana?
Yes.
Mr. Vivids?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Cleaver?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the motion passed it to defer to it indefinitely.
Correct. It wasn't clear to me whether the, the applicant was also requesting deferrals of the other matters that were pending before us, the steep slope CMAs and the two special exceptions, if the applicant could uh, confirm that they're requesting a deferral of all matters pending before the.
Need that to go voice into the microphone?
Well, I, I, I see that the applicant is, applicant's counsel is confirming that the applicant is
A nod has occurred.
Requesting a deferral of all matters pending before the planning commission this evening.
All right. Therefore, for that reason, we will not be having the next hearing, ZMA twenty twenty-one zero 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 nine Old Ivy Residences preserved to manage slips.
But, but Madam Chair, before the, before the chair makes that ruling, there should be a motion, uh, and a second and approval of a deferral for the other matters.
For the other.
Yes, ma'am.
Through the formal process.
Yes, ma'am.
Or motion to defer.
Motion to defer all other matters pending before the planning commission on this application this evening.
As you said.
I, I, Madam, Madam Chair, I should not repeat what our council just said, so that I, so I will, I will, I will adopt the language of our council.
A very wise move.
And so I am moving that language.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Carolyn, would you call the roll? Vote?
Mr. Cleaver?
Hi.
Mr. Murray?
Hi.
Mr. Vivids?
Hi.
Mr. Karazana?
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk?
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, the matter's deferred. Thank you for all your work and we'll look forward to seeing this again in a new and improved state.
From a new state.
So we will, we will, uh, go ahead and take a, just a moment if people need to go home before we move on. Our next item. Give people a chance to shuffle out if they want to. They don't want to hear our exciting committee reports. The riveting is they may be. I don't even have one, so. My committee said not met. My committee's having that, no quorum.
No quorum.
Suspended. Yeah. I've got nothing. I could make a scandal about it. All right, that could be exciting. All right, so let's go ahead with committee reports. Who has a committee report? Those committees actually met.
I, I had a committee report.
Please con- continue.
Um, so we we, uh, the, the hydraulic twenty-nine CAC met last night. And, uh, you know, we're in this different model here where the CACs are doing some and then staffers doing, doing some. So we're splitting the agenda. So the staff is not driving the agenda as.
Oh, okay, okay.
Um, and so last night we heard, we had a, we had a report from, uh, on the affordable housing plan, which I believe is going before the supervisors this week or very soon. And we also had a report from the International Refugee Association, uh, organization, which was actually quite helpful because it also gave us some context that aligned with the affordable housing, gave us some context about what the need is for people who are relocating here with limited assets. Um, and also how we're trying to respond to how the county's trying to respond, which is different from, from the refugee population, but how we're trying to, to what are the, what are the ideas before the county, before our supervisors on how to move forward with a, with a more, um, with affordable housing, with a more vigorous affordable housing plan. I would just say that.
I will just add that one of my employees has been involved in trying to help with refugee settlement and finding affordable places for people to live who have families of five and seven people. And it is, in short, a nightmare. It is, is near im- impossible.
Impossible, and near transportation.
Right, because they, they need, they don't have cars and.
Cars, right. And, and you know, that's the thing that I think that at some point I will talk, Kevin will talk to us about this at some point, I guess. We need to always remind people that the county does not own the transportation, transportation system. We don't own it.
Right.
So if CAT decides it wants to put a bus stop here on this particular day, and then they decide, however they do their metrics, that they don't want to have a, they don't want to have a, a, um, a stop at that location any longer, guess what? It goes.
I used to ride the bus every day.
It goes. And so that's, we're at this disadvantage. And hopefully with this new regional trans, the new regional, um, transit, um, discussions, that that will help to balance that out more. I know that, I know that the county wants to have a bit more balance in that. So it's not, we're not always at the, at the, um, we're not always subject to the city's, to the city's decision-making mechanism.
Very well, and diplomatically stated. I know, sometimes you try. Just kidding. Your report? Reports? You have, um, not been on the commission long enough to probably have attended a committee.
Well, um, I did attend the Creze Community Advisory Committee.
And he's off, he's rocking around. Excuse me.
You went to a CIC?
Yes, he's, where have you? Now, listen up. All attention on our newest commissioner. Ignore the hecklers. They're tired.
So, um, there's, there's been a lot of controversy about the, the Montclair Stream that was, was converted, um, in Creze. And there's sort of the in-run done, a, a creative loophole was found in our water protection ordinance, which allowed the stream to be removed. And so.
Piped or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's the problem with the code. Yeah, you don't have to buffer it if you pipe it.
Yes, so, um, we had Frank Paul, the, um, county, county engineer, come and talk about the, um, the state of the current ordinance and what plans are to perhaps patch that loophole.
No.
Um, and so there's very interesting discussion. I won't go into all the details of it, but, um, something I look forward to following.
Sure, great. And I would love to hear more, maybe offline about that, how that patch was made, because.
Well, it's not made yet, but there's some proposals. I mean, one of, there's a series of stream health proposals that you may have heard about.
Yes.
Um, one of which is a, a stream overlay district, uh, stream buffer overlay district. That was one of the, one of the proposed patches that would fix this, this situation.
Ability to just make the stream go away. Okay, thank you. My CIC will be meeting on Thursday, so it's not that we're not meeting, but it just seems to be off sync. Well, the ACE Committee is just in suspension. Um, and that's one of my committees, and the Struck Preservation Committee did not have a quorum, so no meeting was held. All right, so with that, um, we're done with committee reports. The review of the Board of Supervisors meeting from June one. And it's, she's still, still, still awake over there.
Over here. Thank you, Madam Chair. Candace Perkins, Director of Planning. Um, the Board of Supervisors met, um, on June first. There were two planning items scheduled for public hearing that night. The first was a ZMA for the Skyline Ridge, um, project that came back before you on March first. Um, the Board of Supervisors did approve that application. And the second was another ZMA for, um, Maplewood. Um, that also came before the commission on May first, and the board also approved that application.
Thank you. All right. Any, any older new business? Already welcomed our newest commissioner. So welcome again, and we'll have more conversations about how we work. Um, one thing we do like to know is if, um, you have any, uh, vacation plans to let us know just in case we all take vacation on the same week in July and there's no quorum. So. Are you over there grumbling? You don't have enough vacation? He's retired. No, he's a consultant. Every day is a vacation. All right, we're, did, did you have, are you?
I'm just saying that if you do take vacation, you can always join us online.
That's true, but we still have to have a quorum in person in order for the meeting to count.
Oh, that's right.
All right.
We got that clarification last time.
Yeah, I had, I actually had to take a COVID test so I could come tonight.
Oh.
It was negative. All right.
After you took a sip out of the water?
Share water. All right, the meeting is out of control. Uh, there, are there any items for follow-up? Let's say no. All right, I would like to adjourn this meeting to the next meeting of the Planning Commission on Tuesday, June the twenty-eighth.